You're sitting there watching the recording with butter on like.
I saw that.
I'm not big on fair food. I used to do it in Texas.
Love it.
It's good for kids.
Same here.
Sick for two days.
Exactly. It's good for kids.
It was worth it.
That's right.
Okay, where am I?
Oh, okay.
How come I can never find it?
Into my computer, otherwise I'm doing great.
Where am I? Debbie, you always tell me.
Good afternoon. It is 2:01 on whatever today's date is, and we're about to start our briefing meeting. First item on the agenda is our quarterly reports from our Board Advisory Committee Chairs. Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. Do we have a representative from DAC, District Advisory, Mr. Hertz? Glad to see you moving your arm.
Making progress. Scott Hertz, I'm the chairperson of the District Advisory Council Meeting, I'm sorry, Council for the Board. Everybody has a copy of the written report we submitted. We had a meeting with the superintendent previously where we learned some things. I think it would be probably more useful to the Board to share some of those comments that are not in the report, which is the District Advisory Committee is focusing on trying to reform itself and refocus itself on accomplishing its mission statement, which is that the District Advisory Council in cooperation with the Lee County School Board will gather information and seek input from the schools and the community at large in an effort to advise the Board and develop recommendations for constant improvement of our educational system. It's the opinion of the District Advisory Committee that they've not been doing a lot of that, that there haven't been recommendations that are coming forth from this committee to the Board. And our goal in this year, we've sort of started trying to figure out ways of doing that, and hopefully next year it'll start to occur, is to refocus on that area and to work with the staff of the district to get presentations and options of things where the opinion of the District Advisory Committee is sought and can be provided back to the Board as useful feedback. It's still certainly a useful purpose to have this committee as a way of disseminating information from the school district back to the school advisory councils and to the community at large. But we think the purpose of the committee is to make recommendations. We don't feel that that's been well accomplished over the last several years, and we're looking to refocus to try to do that better for the Board, and hopefully that's what the Board wants from us. Ms. for the mission statement, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Board members, any questions? I am particularly interested in hearing more about how to get more out of your community, not your community, your committee, in terms of recommendations to the Board. Because that's really the essential function of your council, and I know that Ms. Gittens has expressed concern about that with specific regard to DAC. And I'm going to, as a good-of-the-order item later, bring up the fact that we, as a Board, have committed to talking about how we handle these committees and how to better utilize the talent that's on these committees. So I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
One of the things we've suggested to the superintendent is that when staff comes to us with presentations, that that's built into the presentation, that they try to come to us with perhaps something that they want done, and there's perhaps an option A and an option B with pros and cons, and they could solicit input from the committee in that fashion. That's one of the suggestions we've made.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the other things that we talk about a lot, too, is that sometimes when staff comes to those meetings, it's difficult to keep parents from bringing up their individual issues and to keep it generic as to what's good for the good of all. So we're working on that, and we have a good parliamentarian, too, to do it.
Excellent. Thank you. Construction Advisory, do we have anybody from Construction Advisory? Mr. Reynolds? You're hiding back there.
Good afternoon. On our Construction Advisory Committee, we, you know, did not meet during the December break and then went into January with some of the construction updates. Lee High School breaking ground. They were really just mobilizing and scraping the old parking lot up at that point. And we talked a bit about, you know, what's going on with the Army Corps of Engineers and the permitting aspect of the high school Triple M and, you know, how that's progressing and, you know, some of the funding associated with that and, you know, how that design is moving and the timeline associated. Mr. Moore brought a presentation to us based on, you know, the time lag between the sales tax funding, when it actually shows up and when we wanted to get some of these projects started so that we could, we're able to borrow against that future income. One of the design elements, I suppose, that's trying to relieve some of the congestion in our south zone is potentially another K-8 somewhere located nearby the Estero Campus, the Estero High Campus, and the bus, the transportation facilities there being kind of an ideal location for a hub. So preliminary reviewed some site plans on how those buildings might go together in separate phases. And we essentially set up a walkthrough for the month of February, where we're going to go review deeper the castalies of Franklin Park Elementary School and do a tour of that project site. I wasn't able to make the February meeting. I think Ms. Gittens can vouch for my absence running into her in Tallahassee. But I'll do my best to fill in for Darren, which I feel like I threw him to the wolves because we had a record number of emotions on this particular meeting that was somewhat unprecedented for our committee. So going through the Franklin Park Castaldi, walking the campus, talking to the faculty and principals there, they had made a number of recommendations to the Castaldi, essentially more pictures, you know, the acronym Pictures are a Thousand Words, and field locating some of the pictures, as well as updating some of the timelines and the cost associated with that. The reports were, you know, they'd been on the shelf for a while, so two years of construction cost increases and two years of depreciation of the existing facilities. We'll do a good bit to push some of the borderline structures over into the end-of-life period. So they made some recommendations to approve those with some of those stipulations to the Board, which had gone back to the architect of record for those, and he is modifying those changes, which we hope to review at a future meeting. So with that, is there any questions?
Please.
I would like to know what some of the, I know you weren't there, so I don't know if someone mentioned to you what some of the concerns that were more, you know, lively.
Lively.
At the meeting, just, I think because it does reflect the community, what are some of the issues that came out?
Well, the gymnasium is always a bit of a hot topic there because elementary schools don't get gymnasiums. They have one, they use it, it is getting ready to fall down on top of them. And, you know, how do you, do we rehab that structure? Do we, you know, still recommend demolition even though, and then look at a different way of funding mechanism for replacement?
So just as you were talking, it occurs to me, why can't we do an interlocal with the city of Fort Myers to have a rec center attached to that school?
Proximity to the Stars complex would be my only concern, but absolutely, there's no hindrance to that.
Is it?
It's like a block away.
Any way to connect them all?
So they're working on that with Streets Alive.
Right.
And it certainly could be put forward if they're willing to be a partner in this endeavor. Absolutely, there's nothing stopping you.
It's dead center between the Stars, Franklin Park, and Quality of Life. So if you just look at that whole L shape, that is the area.
Is anybody looking at it as a development for interlocal opportunity with the city nonprofits, whatever, so that...
Equality of Life Center could use a bigger space.
Yeah.
I think they're just trying to put it, pull it together, as Mary said, Ms. Fisher said, Streets Alive, making a clear path from one location to the other.
So I think there is some kind of an existing agreement, and the lady from Complete Streets did a presentation to the School Health Advisory. And what had happened was the school district did their part with the sidewalk outside the school, and I think that they're still waiting on the city of Fort Myers and the county commission to complete the work that needs to be done to connect those facilities so that the kids can walk and they don't have to be transported by bus.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm trying to get back to the fact that they don't have a gym. If elementary schools aren't supposed to have a gym, and the state approves this but without a gym, is there some way a gym-type facility can be attached to this building but separate, just like we're doing with some of the high schools?
Like Sanibel or...
So that community access to that building. That's what I'm trying to get at.
There is some of a plan in place, and thanks Scott for bringing this, my attention, to use the covered play pavilion, one that is essentially attached to all elementary schools, but try to make an exception where this one is enclosed and air-conditioned. It's essentially the same structure, same type system, and programmatically could be the same space.
Ms. Gittens?
I guess, and my concern would be that proximity. The Stars Complex and Quality of Life, mostly grant-funded from what I would understand. And so it might create a problem to add a third element to that. The community is only so big. So are we adding too much in the same vicinity? And I get what you're saying, but I'm just thinking it would create this kind of, you know, we've got 50 children here and 50 here, and we need 50, and you need 25, and you need, I think the proximity would be an issue.
Kind of Ms. Johnson, Ms. Jordan.
You're referring to what they have at Edison Park, correct? The outside.
Correct. We just built a big one at Trafalgar Elementary. It's a big size, an outside play pavilion, and I think it's about terminology. They don't put gymnasiums at elementary, but they put play pavilions, and I think the design of that play pavilion is within our purview. So they were satisfied with the concrete floor. They felt that that met their need for what they would need for the kids, and we could put basketball hoops in there. We can skin it. We can put air conditioning, basically, I believe, give them back what they already have in place. But the key is to code it as a play pavilion.
And then the only thing that other, thing that I would add to that is, I know we're speaking about a gymnasium, but we really need to be speaking about the school itself that's falling apart.
That's correct.
Truly, yes.
I mean, that's the bottom line there.
Yes, and there's a number of buildings that are, you know, they're 20 years old, but they're attached to something that's 50 years old. There's one that's freestanding, and how do you address some of those borderline buildings? And, you know, that's where the extra couple of years of price increases and depreciation will help.
Ms. Morgan?
So I guess what I'm, I don't think it's a problem we can solve. I guess what I'm getting at is that I'm a little frustrated that the way some of the things in Lee County operate, everybody's, each political entity is making decisions in a silo. We lost an opportunity to discuss the library in Benita at the same time that we were talking about doing stuff in Benita. I mean, that's what, I mean, anyway. The point is that when we're doing projects like this, are we talking to other people to make certain that what we're doing doesn't interfere with something that they may have, they may be talking about in their long-term plan? That's all I'm asking. Are we...
If you can align your needs, certainly, yes, and, you know, it's not all stepping on toes.
Exactly, you know, and if not, then we know. So that's all I'm asking.
Ms. Gittens, question I have, you talked pavilion. Is that similar to the one at Charleston Park?
I don't know that one in particular.
You familiar with that one?
Not familiar with it. It's a pre-engineered metal shades structure. It'd be the same as tree line or... Tortuga.
Great. Any other questions? That was one heck of a report.
Thank you.
It really was. It was right. It was. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Do we have a representative from CSI, Dr. Stork?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Atkins. The CSI Advisory Committee has met twice since our last report, January 11th, which you see in your committee report, and we also met February 25th. The January 11th meeting was dedicated to safety and security. That was one of the priorities the committee had identified as something to look at this year, particularly relating to Envision 2030 and Goal 18, which is to increase physical safety of district students and staff. So we had a presentation by Mr. Parfit, and he noted that the district is in compliance with the majority of the statute that was enacted on July 1st in 2018. And following the presentation, the committee had several questions for discussion regarding current situations, data being collected, et cetera. At our February 25th meeting, we did have some information brought in by Mrs. McClellan from Lori Brooks relating to that presentation, so we had some of our questions answered, particularly with regard to Dr. Parfit's presentation. So we got clarification on the fact, for example, that 85% of the schools have a threat assessment team. Currently, three additional training sessions are going to be held between now and the end of the year for the remaining schools, and students are concerned, students of concern are being entered into a database, and that process is being, has been developed. So we did get some of our questions answered there. We also, at the February 25th meeting, reviewed the presentation that was given to the accreditation team during their recent visit. And future meetings are going to be from several district staff related to those priorities that the committee developed at the beginning of the year. And our next meeting is March 25th.
Great. Any questions or comments?
I will just offer one comment having nothing to do with your comments, and that is that Debbie Jordan will be covering for me at the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Because I'm unable to attend, so.
Okay, we'll look forward to it.
I was jealous that she jumped on it so fast because I wanted to go. So we're all fighting to be there.
We'd like to have all of you there, so.
There's sunshine issues if more than one of us are there, but...
Yes, true. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Curriculum Advisory? Mr. Joseph? Don't tell me. Camputaro?
Close. Camputaro. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, I am the proud chairperson of the Curriculum Advisory Committee, and we've been busy since the last time that the previous chairperson, April Ketchon, had reported to the Board some changes. We found ourselves in a very similar situation like DAC, where we needed to redefine who we were as an advisory committee. So that was something that we had been working on diligently over the last three meetings we've had, December, January, and February, we had met. We were able to successfully narrow our focus and reestablish that we are indeed an advisory committee, and we started changing the approach of how we were meeting as in previous years. Although we did some fantastic work, and this is my fourth year on this committee, and so I can speak to that personally, we were receiving a lot of information over the past few years, but they weren't necessarily relating to an advisement for the school board. So we established a five-step process document and parameters for future meetings when we plan our agendas. Will this be something that we can do a recommendation on for the school board, and will it pertain to curriculum and instruction? So when we met in February, we were able to work together and utilize the strengths of our team and collaborate on this process document. So now we use that moving forward. In December, we had met, we had a presentation with four middle school administration teams on a pilot credit retrieval program that they're using. There wasn't enough data at that time to make any form of a recommendation to support. We're going to revisit that in May when they have more, because it was a very small sample size. So that was exciting. And in January, we were talking about the math textbook adoption. Then the governor had made his announcement, so of course that threw our committee into a tailspin because we were on board. We had two members of our committee that were on textbook adoption. We were looking good. Dr. Creel and her department gave a wonderful presentation when we met in February and laid out kind of the next steps for Lee County for the curriculum and instruction department innovation. And we were able to use our new process document and our new parameters to come up with an interest-based, bargaining, interest-based vote, so to speak, on a recommendation for the school board, which is now being shared or had been shared with administration. We're proud of what we're doing. I feel that we're heading in the right direction now, and we are a true advisory committee.
Great. Have any questions or comments? Ms. Morgan?
I got to make this comment. Advisory committees have come a long way. They really have, since when I was first on the Board six years ago. I mean, I think that we, as a Board, are doing a much better job identifying appropriate people for these committees. We're getting diversity of experience and opinion, but we're getting people to the table, all of whom share a passion for that particular committee and their work, and they're really committed to making a difference. And I just, I just had to put that comment out there. So thank you to all of you who have commented thus far because there's a definite theme.
And I'm wondering, is that, would that process document be applicable only to curriculum advisory, or is that something you think could be adapted to other advisory committees?
I feel confident that can be adopted with other committees. It would just, there might have to be some tweaks, of course, depending on the committee, but it is something that, of course, I think could be utilized as a tool.
Can you share that with the Board Attorney, please, and have him send it out to us?
Absolutely.
My, my question for you is, you mentioned that you have a recommendation for the Board. Are you comfortable giving that to us? You said you gave it to administration.
We, so we voted at our last meeting, and it's in the minutes, and I believe that administrators and the county received the same vote. I could share what we came up with. So we were given three options for what the county should do with the new, you know, what's going on. And our vote as a committee was that we want to continue to use what we, the resources we have to go math, in addition to supplemental, you know, curriculum and support that way.
Great. Please.
So that was a recommendation for, to send up to the Governor?
It was our recommendation for the school board, that that's when, I guess, it's going to go eventually before the Board. The Curriculum Advisory Committee is in favor of this, using the interest-based voting.
Thank you. Perfect. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Camputaro. Thank you. Dr. Manaya, I see you out there. From Equity and Diversity.
Good afternoon. Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Atkins, yeah, it's been fun with EDAC over the last, since March. First, we were working with Ms. Javanelli as our board liaison, and then now with Ms. Jordan. And our committee is also most happy working with Jared Edie. He is such a great addition to the district in his new capacity and a perfect fit, of course, for our committee. I guess the key points I'd like to share is that, you know, continuing the theme, right, our team has been focused on reframing EDAC, which we affectionately call EDAC 2.0. And we felt that although we historically received great presentations from staff, there was limited time for questions, deliberations, and recommendations. So really, since last March, we've been looking at how do we reframe? And over the past three months, for example, the Equity and Diversity Committee focused our time on creating not only a vision but goals, action plans, and now we're working on metrics, which we will then recommend to the Board. As a brief background, last year we heard from community leaders, we had a panel of community leaders as to what did they think the new vision or future for EDAC, what they would recommend. And then we had presentations from Mr. Bradley on the 2030 Strategic Plan and Dr. Atkins on minority recruiting and strategy in December. And although they were great documents, great presentations, we thought that we can further enhance the tangible goals and metrics for Equity and Diversity in the 2030 Strategic Plan, and we thought that we can provide additional guidance to minority recruiting, staffing, and retention. So we aligned our EDAC goals to the Envision Strategic Plan. We focused our attention on the following three areas in our last three meetings. Attraction and retention of teachers, strength and support diversity training in the district, community engagement, and communications. And sincerely, probably 90% of our time, 85 to 90% of our time is spent on deliberation. We have table groups that are really going in deep in terms of their recommendations to our larger EDAC team, and we are, we are pretty close. So what we want to come back to at a future meeting is our per-goal, our action plan process and key performance metrics, and we believe we'll have those ready for you by next meeting. Lastly, there was some low-hanging fruit. One of our discussion points on strength and support diversity training as a district goal is last night we recommended and voted on reinforcing online diversity training, which is also part of the Safe Schools Training for All Employees. So the committee formally voted on that to support Mr. Edie and in the district in ensuring that gets out to all employees. So, yeah, it's been, been, been such a, such a blessing to have the team fully engaged, and we found that table setup, that smaller table setup really helps more discussion, more input, more engagement. And so we look forward to bringing back much clearer plans with metrics as well. Any questions?
Great. Any questions?
Could you tell me what diversity training looks like?
Well, diversity training for all employees, and it's already part of Safe Schools. So in essence, it would give them an awareness of diversity for each employee. And then although it's, you'll see it on our next recommendation, it's a version of diversity training for students as well. So we're doing research on what might constitute great diversity training for students, how might that be accomplished, and we'll get that to you as well. But it's already part of the Safe Schools Program that Mr. Edie recommended, because he was working on that in parallel. And then when our committee brought it up, he said, "Great, I'm already working on that, and it's part of a recommendation." And I bet he's, I believe he's already met with multiple departments and has that as part of the structure now. Is that correct, Dr. Atkins?
And is that different from cultural sensitivity training?
I believe it's included, but we'll have, we'll have Mr. Edie, the superstar, provide more, more guidance.
You got to live up to that intro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To your point, Ms. Patrica, the Safe Schools Training at the beginning of the year, all of our staff members have the opportunity to participate. So it's with asbestos, bullying prevention, fire prevention. Within Safe Schools apparatus, there's the opportunity to have diversity awareness, sensitivity training for staff to student, as well as staff to staff. So working with Mr. Parfit's team, starting in the fall, it'll be the opportunity for our teachers to have staff-to-student diversity awareness, isn't certification or certificate with that, and all of our non-instructional staff to have staff-to-staff introduction to it. So it is not completely separate from the district's initiative for culturally relevant and responsive teaching, but it's conjunctioned with. So it's an opportunity to say we have the exposure at the beginning of the year across the board, in addition to those offerings that are going through the diversity inclusion and also our professional development department.
I have a question.
Please.
How much do you cover on intrinsic bias?
So with the training that we did with the principals, building inclusive teams, that was a segment on it, as well as the Safe Schools opportunity to have that provided to our staff to students, there is a segment with stereotypes and implicit bias, as well as it being into the avid system of culturally relevant and responsive teaching. And the district provided culturally responsive teaching, professional development with our PD department. It is a section in that, and it is a part of the stereotype conversation.
Is there anything on, like, the learn page or something like that, that, almost like reminders, or, you know, just little points, or maybe some of the handouts or things like that?
On the learn page, connected to implicit bias and stereotypes?
And, right, and the cultural sensitivity, just, you know, like, I don't know if you hand out a worksheet, or, you know, remember this, remember this?
Sure. Not currently, to my knowledge, but that definitely is something that we can talk to Ms. Stillwell about, perhaps having that included as a part of our website offerings.
Chris?
Please.
I would love to be a part of participating in some of the trainings. So I guess my question is, how can we do that?
Sure. Our next offering of culturally responsive teaching, I'll make sure I work with the board office to provide that for our board members. It will be in the month of April, provided and facilitated by our professional development department. As well as in the month of August, Jackie Corry and Lehigh Senior High School are hosting Mr. Patrick Briggs, who is the author and guru of culturally responsive teaching through the lens of the avid system of college readiness. So through that, he is doing a kickoff, the top 10 things that culturally responsive teachers do, two sessions at Lehigh Senior High School. So those are just the two that are coming up very soon. So I'll make sure that's coordinated with the board office.
Just as a follow-up, you have so many different kinds of training for, you know, principals, teachers, students, that sort of thing. It might be helpful to send out to us, like, a menu of what, a list of the different trainings, and maybe even advise us as board members which ones
Yes, ma'am.
would be the best for us to see, because I think, you know, none of us see ourselves as biased people, but, yeah, we, we don't even know
Yes, ma'am.
our biases, and I think we could really learn from this.
And to your point, Ms. Vaughn, we all come with equipped, different frames of references and the lens through which we see life. And that comes through our ethnic backgrounds, our cultural backgrounds, our location, so that frames our judgment, and that frames our interaction with individuals. So that is important, to have that, that frame of reference and that lens adjusted and looked at and reviewed.
I have, I have mentioned before that I would, oh, I'm sorry.
It's funny that you brought that up, because one of my go-to-the-order items today was to request consensus from the board for cultural sensitivity training for us. And I'm not sure, like, you talked about teacher to student. I don't know if that's specifically applicable to us, or if you would recommend something else for the board to undergo in terms of cultural sensitivity training. But that was why I asked the question, because I wanted to see the difference, what the difference was between the two. I mean, I'm happy to attend anything at the district, but if you think there's something out there that we, as a leadership team, not just a board, but as a leadership team, a governance team, would benefit from, I would appreciate that recommendation.
So the recommendation is you all explore that concept. Just looking at it on its surface, I think the opportunity to have staff-to-staff or adult-to-adult conversations, and that'll give us the opportunity to learn how to work with each other and understand our frame of references and our lens, and then how our implicit and explicit and explicit biases might affect us in ways that we're not completely realizing. So that would be my advice, starting from an advantaged point.
Great. I'm sorry, Ms. Morgan was first.
I'm a little concerned here about us sitting at this table and trying to work directly with Jared on our participation in stuff that's being scheduled for staff, et cetera. My preference, as a board member, would be that we indicate to Dr. Atkins our interest in doing this kind of training, and that he, you know, provides suggestions to us. And I'll tell you why. It was very interesting going, and this totally different subject, but it was very interesting going to the foundations leadership thing, because when there are no principals there, no staff there, you hear different things from the kids than you hear in student advisory. And my concern is that when we get involved in staff training or principal training, that we color, we influence how the work goes. So my preference would be that we indicate a desire to do this with the superintendent and let him work with staff too. But that's the opinion of one person.
See, and our presence changes the dynamics.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
For sure. Ms. Gittens?
Previously, a few briefings ago, and we were talking about training for the board, and I brought up the fact that I had spoken with Dr. Atkins, and we, he had asked me to get with Dr. Carlin to discuss, and I know she's in the room, every time I bring this up, she's out of the room. Anyway, and we had been discussing possible training for the board that would cover these topics and potential trainers that could do it. So I would like to maybe see if you can give consensus for us to continue doing that. I know we did the other team building or whatever that we did last week, but I would really like to continue working with her to see if we can get some of the individuals that we have information about and bring it to the board to make a choice as to which one.
So I, this is a little out of order, but if it's okay, I'll beg your indulgence that we go ahead and seek consensus on this item first. I would feel comfortable with that, in addition to, you know, working with the superintendent and having him work with Mr. Edie to come up with whatever would be best for the board. Is, I'm seeing nodding heads. Can we reach consensus on that? Yes, no, can live with it?
So I just want to be clear and make sure. So what, what Dr. Carlin and I had worked on previously, is that not on the table, or is that on the table as well?
Is that cultural sensitivity training with the input of Dr. Atkins and his staff?
Well, Dr. Atkins, you remember our conversation that we had, and we talked about it, and you said for me to get with Denise to
Yes, that's great.
look at a shortlist. So we, we did have that discussion, and we have looked at some individuals and talked to them about the training. We can include Mr. Edie in, in our conversations to kind of shortlist that as well.
I would just suggest that we remove Mr. Edie out of this and then just have it
All right, so I think
He has enough to do. Just remove him.
So, if I can, Madam Chair, both of our acting chair and chair, what I will do is work with Dr. Atkins and take his direction, but at the bare minimum, provide the board the opportunity of having an analogy when these are available going forward for the two summer opportunities in April, and communicate with the superintendent for his pleasure of how he wants to communicate out with the board. The keynote, I know Ms. Corey would love to have you all attend the two keynote sessions, very similar to our avid open houses, as well as the offering with our staff development or professional development department in April. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I didn't mean to. Thank you, Dr. Manaya. Appreciate it. Sorry to hijack your presentation. So do we have consensus? Yes? Thumbs up? Thumbs down? Can live with it? I have all seven thumbs up. Ms. Reader. And now I move on to, I think it's Finance Advisory, and Mr. Cohen is beside himself that he can't be here today because he's sick. I think you all know his commitment to this district, and he wouldn't be here, I mean, he wouldn't miss it unless he absolutely had to. So we get Ms. Fletcher.
I'm here instead. So I just want to go over in December 19th meeting, the committee, Ms. Patrica met and was discussing the new sales tax oversight committee. The Finance Advisory Committee had asked if they, they would like the sales tax committee to have liaisons from other groups, and if they agreed to that, then Mr. Cohen was voted as the liaison and Mr. Teblum as the alternate. And then, the committee then started talking about the Gibson report to see, look at further efficiency studies that may want to be done. There was three areas of concern that they were wanting to look at. One was technology, one was HR, and the other was the facilities maintenance area. Before they made recommendations, they wanted to have the individuals come from those areas to talk about the Gibson report and what their thoughts were on that. So the January meeting, Mr. Trey Davis came and basically, I can say, blew the committee away with his vision and where he was going. And we actually have two student representatives on our committee, and I think they provide very good insight on when the district has things that we put out, the student side of what they're seeing on it. So that was good insight when it came in. After that meeting, they decided that they would take technology off the table. They felt very comfortable with where we were going. In February, and this is not in your report because the, we had not met yet, but in February, Dr. Angela Pruitt came in for human resources, and she talked about where human resources was going and what the flaws were, as she felt, in the Gibson report as it pertains to her area. After conversations with her, they decided to not move forward with the human resources area. The next meeting is supposed to be the maintenance and facilities area. However, because of the amount of money that's in that area, they recommended that they would support an efficiency study in that, in the maintenance facilities area, as long as the cost was in reason. They felt like there was enough at stake and enough efficiencies that we might be able to find in that area to move forward with that. So that was their recommendation at the last advisory meeting, and we will be meeting with a group in March for that.
Great. Any questions or comments?
You said you were going to meet with a, a group?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure just yet. It was supposed to be, Mr. Mora was going to be there, but he is no longer with the district. So I'm not sure we're going to have someone from that area. I don't know if it'll be Mr. Rickenbacher or Jimmy, Mr. Flock, or who it will be that will be coming in to talk.
Ms. Morgan? So you're making the recommendation to the board, but I want to make certain the superintendent is also going to make a recommendation to the board with respect to the Gibson efficiency reports and how we move forward.
That would be my plan, yes.
Okay, good.
I think I've, I've been clear, at least the fact that I really feel that that's an area that, that needs further scrutiny. Gibson was the consultant that we had the most experience with, and they had indicated that that was one of the areas that they wanted to do the, quote, "deep dive in." And when I initially made my recommendation to the board, it was, you know, financial accounting, payroll, and the maintenance department were my three primary areas. So what I've heard from the Financial Advisory Committee is that they would concur as it relates to the maintenance department.
Yes, Ms. Vaughn? So, so just to be clear, what the financial advisory put forth was just an efficiency study, not an actual deeper dive into the, into the numbers? Because I realize Gibson is a firm that deals only with educational institutions, and they, they have a lot of advisory capacities and, and that sort of thing. My question would be, did the financial advisory look at any other potential firms? I know we've used Gibson in the past, but there are a lot of other organizations out there. So was there a look at others beside Gibson?
No, they did not look at any others, but I'm sure that if, you know, you wanted them to, that they would be open to reviewing others, other possibilities, but that was not part of it. They were just looking at the current report and making a recommendation on one that they would support the efficiency study on.
Well, just to finish that, you know, it's not up to me, it's up to your, your committee to do that, but I certainly would feel better as a board member, listening and, you know, looking at the advisory, you know, what, what you came up with. I would feel better in supporting that as a board member if I knew that the experts in that committee had actually looked at some other possibilities besides just one that we've already used before.
And I will take that back to them.
Okay, thank you.
And this doesn't mean that we can't do it going forward, I'm just saying that I don't think that typically advisory committee would recommend specific vendors, because we would have no way of knowing or holding them accountable for any personal relationships they might have with vendors, or whether they would benefit from, from hiring a vendor, whereas when we get recommendations from the superintendent and his staff, there are very specific laws that have to be followed and that kind of thing. Mr.?
And it was this, so the Gibson, and the Gibson study, sorry, Kelly.
... board if I had known that at least other options beside Gibson, other types, not with the idea of hiring anybody specific, but looking at other
What happened before we got Gibson in the first?
organizations, not to hire them, but just as different kinds of audits, which I'm in favor of.
And if I may, if I may, I'm sorry. So their recommendation was to do a deeper dive or another efficient study. They were not recommending a vendor to do that with. Their recommendation was just that that is an area that they would recommend doing the deeper dive in.
It sounded like Gibson was the recommended vendor.
It was, they were not the recommended vendor.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I made it sound that way. They just were doing the, the deeper dive is what they were recommending.
Okay. Ms. Gittens, Ms. Morgan, and then Ms. Jordan. And then I'll turn my head to the right. And then I'll turn my head to the right. First, Dr. Atkins.
I don't know about first, but my, what I can do for the board is, you know, I think that between the state auditor, between the issues coming up around indoor air quality questions that we have, that have been raised by the public as it relates to the Maintenance Department, you know, I think that it would behoove us to move forward if it's with Gibson or some other firm. So, what I can do is we can bring this board back options in terms of what you would like to do as it relates to that, that area. I will make a specific recommendation as to what it will be, but I think it's important for us to get with companies such as Gibson. Gibson would be one of those options, and really allow the board to see what can you expect if we were to bring Gibson in here? What would they do? Does that meet the need? Or do we need to go with another firm that might come at this a little bit differently? So, I will be happy to, to do that. I think that's at least aligned with the recommendation of the Financial Advisory Committee. And if it's the pleasure of this board, that's what I will do, and we'll bring that back expeditiously. I do know that this is a rather urgent matter, and we need to get this behind us. So, I'll be happy to do that.
Okay, I'm going to go in alphabetical order. Ms. Fisher.
So, then, I'll just ask Dr. Atkins this. Before we had the Gibson study, how did we arrive at Gibson as the, as the company that was going to do that? Were there other bidders, or did we just?
Yes, as I, as I recall, and I think, you know, Kelly or Greg could probably help me with this answer, but we looked at, as I, as I recall, about three other vendors. I think we settled on Gibson because Gibson had the experience across the whole country. They were able to bring to bear different departments and division expertise more readily than some of the other firms, and they had experience with school districts that were similar in size and scope. And I believe it was, they were working up in Tampa.
Hillsborough.
Hillsborough, yes. So, the timing was, was just right. They were, they finished up that audit, and, and so, timing worked out. They could come down and do ours.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens.
I recall at the last action meeting, I think, Ms. Patrica, you brought up this audit, and we had discussion about the Finance Advisory Committee, and I asked the question as to why it hadn't been brought to the board first. And the answer was that the previous board had approved taking this recommendation to the Finance Committee. And we had discussion about that. And in the, in the idea of being continuous improvement, I believe that we should look at other possibilities since the board has new members as well, and give us the opportunity to, I think with continuous improvement, it means sometimes having different eyes look at a situation. And since we have used Gibson a lot, not saying we should not use Gibson, that's not what I'm saying. But I totally agree with what Ms. Vaughn is saying. There should be options, and that the, the process would be that the superintendent and his staff would present those options to the Finance Committee, and then we can get your findings, and then that would help us to make a decision.
Typically, the, typically, that would be, I mean, they've given us their recommendation, which is take the deeper dive audit, and now staff comes to us with recommendations for, yeah, for who the vendors are to do it. I mean, I can take it to Finance Advisory, but again, I, I don't have any way of vetting their connections to who these vendors might be, and I have a much harder time putting my faith in their recommendations than I do staff that, that has to follow laws and very specific processes when they bring. I think, I think we're saying the same thing. I think that's what the superintendent basically just said, minus the recommendation from Finance Advisory. Ms. Morgan.
So, piggybacking on what Ms. Fisher said, I was on the Finance Advisory Committee four years ago when we talked about the operational audit, and there are in fact only four firms in the country at that time that had the bandwidth to do the kind of superficial evaluation that was done with Gibson, and that at the time, we hired them to do that sort of first level evaluation was doing the deep dive in every aspect of Hillsborough's operation. So, Hillsborough went for a significantly larger contract with Gibson because they had that. So, I'm just saying that the last time around, when the Finance Advisory Committee looked at this, basically, there was only one firm to look at that met the criteria of the committee in terms of the work that we were asking to be done. With respect to going back to the Finance Advisory Committee, I just feel that's inappropriate. I feel exactly as you have said, that the Finance Advisory Committee makes a recommendation to the board that we need to move forward and do a deep dive in a particular area, then the, the board directs the superintendent to bring his recommendations to the board, and that is really the extent of, in my opinion, the board's involvement and the Advisory Committee involvement.
Ms. Jordan.
I guess my question is, yeah, I don't think that we need to go back and re-ask them about this. They want us to do the deep dive, so that's already been stated. And I understand that we have gone through the process of choosing Gibson with other vendors, and that's where we derive to choose them, right? That's where we came from. We started and we have Gibson. I don't know how long we've had them, because I've only been here four months, so I don't know how many times that they have audited us. Has it been one time, five times? I mean, twice?
Eight years ago, they did a transportation survey for the school district. Was it transportation survey, or was it the community survey?
Community survey.
They did a community survey for the community. They did the, if anybody remembers, they went out to the greater community, and they asked all of these questions about school choice, transportation, et cetera, et cetera, and they presented a report to the board. The only other thing they have been contracted to do was this study that was done a year ago, losing track of time, anyway, a year ago. That's the only work we've done, they've done for us.
Ms. Jordan.
And so, now, we're asking them to do the deep dive, which was suggested by the Advisory Board, depending upon the cost.
Maybe, maybe not, depending on what, what Dr. Atkins goes back with.
Yes, okay, gotcha.
Ms. Gittens.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to clarify, my, I wasn't saying we had to go back to the Finance Committee. When it was explained at the last meeting, it was stated as though the board had agreed to take the proposal of Gibson and the deep dive to the Finance Committee. So, that's how I think we got to the idea that they were deciding upon Gibson and the deep dive. Am I correct?
I think that's probably how it came out, but.
Understood. Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, and I, I just want to go on record as, again, clarifying that my initial understanding was that the committee was bringing forward not just deep dive, but recommending Gibson. I'm fine with what Dr. Atkins said, that, you know, their recommendation is a deep dive, and in that case, we don't have to ask anything else. And, but again, as a board member, I would only support this if I saw other options, because it has been quite a few years since they were initially hired, and I like what Ms. Gittens said, sometimes different eyes on things. And again, we weren't entirely happy with, we had some findings, right, that disagreed with them. So, maybe it's time to look at others, not saying they won't be the ones chosen by the board. But I just want to make sure, because we've had a lot of comments, that that was my initial understanding. It was just a semantic thing, the way it came, the way it came out, but that I misunderstood what she was saying. It sounded like you're recommending Gibson. Got it.
Just recommending the deep dive.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you for filling in. You look much different from Mr. Cohen. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Sales Tax Budget Forecast. We have Mr. Blurtin, and Ms. Letcher, you're back.
Get to sit this time.
We got more than that. We got lots of people.
Thank you again, Advisory Committees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon, Mr. Blurtin.
Dr. Atkins and Mr. Dodig. Yes, we have a team up here today, as the purpose of this is to, is to brief all of you on our updated Sales Tax Budget Forecast, and Ms. Letcher will be stepping through that. And the first part of it is just a, is showing you the updates on the revenue, on what we are projecting the revenue to be, as we've been getting updated information and have been in contact with the Department of Revenue. So, the anticipated revenues that we are expecting to receive here as early as next week, we still don't have a definitive date on that yet. And then, going out, we have those updated numbers, and then, how does that affect our overall budget outlook for the sales tax? So, we'll step through the revenue piece of that, and then how we are going to be appropriating the sales tax revenue. So, Ms. Letcher will step through each of those pieces. If you do recall, Mr. Jerry Ford and Mr. Will Reed, we've met with each of you individually to go through what options we have available to us from a financing perspective, from a debt perspective, so we can speak to that as well, because we do have in our budget outlook, which has not been a part, was not in our original referendum, but is now included, is our recommendation, as we've discussed with the individual, with each of you individually and now together, of what our recommendations and what those options look like, and what it looks like in the budget. And then, Susan has the most fun part today. We'll wrap up and, and step you through what our public-facing website is going to look like. It is for demonstration purposes only. This is not live, but it will, it looks live as she'll step through that. But this is essentially where you, the public, anyone can get to our district website and get to the information and see the sales tax, how we are expending it from a district level and then at each school level. And as we get to that part, we'll, we'll give all the disclaimers, is that, again, this is for demonstration purposes only, but we will be launching this at the, by the end of the month. So, as I said, Kelly will be going through the budget forecast, and then, Mr. Ford, Reed, and I regarding the debt strategies, and we'll end with Ms. Malley. Sound good?
Great.
All right.
So, thank you very much. I wanted to start by talking about the original projection. Can you hear me okay? So, I wanted to start by talking about the original projections, because I know there has been some confusion about where those numbers came from and things like that. So, I wanted to.
I don't think the mic is on.
Press the button.
Let me move it closer. Better? Okay. So, I wanted to talk about where the original projections came from, because I know there's been some discussion about the amounts. So, we received information from the Office of Economic and Demographic Research, and basically, it comes out, and it's a, a head of projection on what school districts could possibly have earned if they had done the half penny sales tax. So, it's really a what you're missing out on type thing is what the Office of Economic and Demographic Research put out. So, that is the top layer that you can see. That's what we had based our original estimates on. Sorry, just going to try and point to them here. So, this is what we had originally based them on. So, when we looked at that and we went across, as you can see, a 10-year average was a 1.04% increase. So, we took that information, and, and it's important to note that we did this in 2016, 2017. So, it was a while ago. As you can see, in 2017, 2018, the Office of Demographic and Research jumped up from 59 million to 70 million over that time period. So, it was a very quick drop, jump after we had already put out our initial projections. So, that is how we based them. We sat down with a group of people and went through what we thought. Based on those numbers, we had estimated a 3.5% increase per year over the 10-year period, realizing that the first year and the last year are only half-year collections. They're not full-year collections. Based on that, we came up with the $754 million that was presented in the plan. Since then, we've gone back, and we've pulled actual collections from the sales tax. We've looked at if that was the actual collections, how much would a half cent of that be? And that is on the right-hand side. So, you can see those numbers on the right, starting from, I think, 2012, 2013. That's our projection on what the half cent could have gotten us based on actual collections. As you can see, the percents range anywhere from 9.6 to 2.45% per year. Now, the 2.45%, I will tell you, was the year that Hurricane Irma hit. It dropped way down. So, I took the average of those five years, and the average was 6.81%. So, me being the conservative person that I am, I am projecting a 6% increase per year. And so, our new projections, as you can see, are on the bottom in the little highlighted area, and our new projections are based on a 6% growth of what we believe the actual collections will be. So, based, are there any questions on how I came up with them before and how I'm, how we're coming up with them now? Because I know there, I had many conversations with everyone on how we came up with those numbers, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood where we're coming from.
I have my age-old question of what happens to the extra half cent that they collect? So, is that figured into this?
We do not get the additional half cent. It does not come to the school district of Lee County.
I know we don't. But do we know who does?
The state general fund.
Okay. To be continued.
What is, what further question do you have about that?
No, I, I had a discussion with Mr. Larry Hart about it, and the concern is that if it's collected in Lee County with Lee County funds, then why is it going into the general fund of the state when it's money collected here? And I haven't, I know he was working on it. I don't know if there's an answer, because there is a concern that, you know, why are we giving the state additional general funds?
Isn't it the state, the state statute? We've had this conversation. The state statute requires the money to go into the general fund, and so, when people in the community come up to me and say, "Where's my half penny?" I say, "Well, you're very lucky to have Mr. Eagle and Mr. Rodriguez in the room, because you can ask them that question, because that's the state statute." So, to me, continuing to go down that road sort of puts something on our shoulders that really we're not responsible for, right? Like, it's the half penny that we collect and that, that revenue that we use to build and maintain and make schools safe and all that.
Mr. Ford can, can, he has just a little.
I would just bear in mind that sales taxes are highly elastic. They're highly subject to the economy, and I think Ms. Letcher does a great job in being conservative in these things. And if you sort of take a look at those initial estimates and the subsequent estimates, the truth will probably be somewhere in the middle, right? Don't hang your hat on that higher number. If you took a look at Hillsborough, who instituted its sales tax in the '96, '97 timeframe, it grew along those lines until 2006, 2007, hit about $28 million a year, and then the economy dropped. And it was 2014 and 15 before it reached that $2,006, $2,007 dollar amount again. That entire period of time, it was below, almost a 10-year period. So, being conservative here is a gift to the board that your staff is giving you. It's going to be somewhere in the middle there, but don't hang your hat on that high end.
And I have one additional question. In the shaded part, the updated revenue estimates increased by 6%. I'm a little confused on that one. Can you explain, are we reading, reading a cross from FY '19, or is this just on its own?
For FY '19, yes. If you came across to FY '19, my original projection for the full year was 63 million, and now it's 79 million, but a half a year went from 31.6 million to 39.5 million. So, it's across the page with my original estimates, and then, my new estimates straight across. And I'm sorry, I should have drawn lines so you could see and follow it across.
No, it gives us something to do. So, the 39 is the 6% is what?
That is the half cent that we will be collecting for half a year.
That's our latest estimate.
It's 6%.
Growth.
Growth over the previous year.
Right, okay.
And what, an important note, again, as Kelly has said, and as Jerry, these numbers will cont- continue to change as we start collecting actual sales tax. So as soon as we get that first deposit here within the, whenever that comes in, in these next few days or weeks, these numbers will adjust accordingly, because then that's actual collection, and then we can extrapolate that out accordingly. So these numbers will be moving constantly as we're collecting on a monthly basis, budget to actual.
Okay, I told a story. I have one more question. So the 79 is for the total year of FY '19, of which we will get March, June, and...
We will collect from January through June. So it represents a half a year, because our fiscal year is July to June. So, yes. And then 2028 will also be a half year of revenue.
Thank you. Great.
Mr. Ford just pointed out a good thing. So this is the actual year of collections that I have here, the 39 million, so because, or the actual, when the state collects them, not when we do. So the 39 million might end up being less, but it'll come the following year, because it'll lag behind when we actually get it, when we actually see it.
At the use of the funds.
Right.
Any other questions on that piece? I just wanted to make sure that everyone was comfortable with that, because I know I've had a lot of questions. Okay, so then the next thing I would like to talk about is, whoops, let me get it here. So we've taken the updated numbers that I have now based on actual collections, and we've updated our revenue estimates. We have, and Mr. Ford and Mr. Reed have talked to you about the revenue anticipation note. And so I'm sure you remember the reason that we are requesting to do a revenue anticipation note is because our expenditures that we would like to do for our schools will come before the money does. So that we have the cash to do it, we would like to request the ability to do the revenue anticipation note. So I built in the revenue anticipation note that we felt like we need to get us started and get us going for the cash, to get the cash before it comes in from the state. And then we estimated the interest, and of course, interest is another one of those things that's really hard to estimate. We did our best, and we're hoping we're close, but, you know, you just never know with that. But we, again, I try to be a little bit conservative. I'd rather have a little extra than over-project and not be able to fund things that we thought we could do.
And just to clarify, the interest income is income generated when the money comes in and it is in one of our interest-bearing accounts. It is earning interest until the time we expend it. So that's the budgeted amount that we're foreseeing potentially and are generating an interest income from our accounts.
So that's the top part with the new revenue that you see. I'm going to skip down to the bottom portion, which shows the places that we're spending the money, or we would like to spend the money. We do have a...
Just really quickly, Mr. Mazurkowitz, who's the Chair of the ISOC, brings up continuously during those meetings that really anything beyond a two-year projection is not accurate, and he continuously reminds us to keep that in mind. So when we're at year three and these numbers are completely different, we don't go back and say, "You solo something different three years ago," or whatever. I just want that to be in the back of our minds as we go through this.
And so I'm actually just showing you a five-year estimate, and I'm doing that because that lines up with our five-year capital plan. So to keep everything consistent, I'm doing the five-year. The Sales Tax Committee has said that they only want to look at current year and one year out, because anything beyond that is really not a good thing to be looking at. So that's where our focus is with them, so that we can keep them current on the current year and where we're going the following year. I will always bring to you a five-year projection of what we're looking at. Thank you for that. So one of the things that we were, we would like to recommend is that previously we had Lehigh Senior High addition to be funded from a COPS. We would like to request to move this over to be funded from the sales tax dollars, that we just believe that's a better thing for our bucks on that one. Also, you'll notice that, and the original plans were, the original sales tax plan was put in the briefing documents earlier, so you can see the differences. But in this, middle school MM and high school MMM amounts have changed. This is to fund the full amount from the sales tax rather than split-fund it from COPS and sales tax. Some of the other things that we've done is we've added some additional dollars into our security items for this year. And really, besides that and adding the debt moving forward, are the changes that we are recommending that we make to the sales tax plan as of right now.
I have one. You see the fog over my head and the birds flying around?
It's okay.
All right. Question is, at the top, you have sales tax, the note, the interest from the note, correct?
The interest from the money that is, that when we collect it, it goes right into an interest-bearing account, deposit account, and it will be earning interest. And then as we are expending it, while it's sitting in that account, it's earning interest. So this is the projected amount of interest that that money would be generating in the account.
So that will continue to decrease?
As money is not being, correct?
Okay. And then the, so the total then is the 144, 965. And then if we continue to go straight down, we're looking at the expenditures based on that amount, correct?
Yes, that is the expenditures that we are proposing for this current year. Now, remember, the funds have not been received yet, so we're trying to actually put into the plan this year what we believe we can get done this year. So that's what you're seeing in this year's expenditures, and you'll see next year that jumps way up, because we have a full year and we can actively work on those projects for a full year.
Some of those projects for the remainder of this year through June are getting done, but there are also projects that will get started and then carry on into the next year. And for our large construction projects, it would carry on for more than two years.
Okay, so you're stating the revenue at the 144, 965. The expenditures would be the 29, 021, 969?
Yes, ma'am.
Which then would leave us in reserve the 115, 943?
Yes, and that's the 115, 943 is what we are anticipating to have remaining at the end. Now, remember, that will probably be different, because we probably won't collect the full 39 million this year. But we brought that over then in 1920 as additional estimated revenue coming in as the 115. You'll see the fund balance unallocated line that is then taking into account that amount that wasn't used the previous year.
And most of that is through the revenue anticipation note, or the sales tax bond that we'll go forward with, that additional 105 million that we're taking right now, because we have projects that are getting started and that we're paying for. That note will take a piece of that, so that's also included in that overall number.
And when are you looking in, is it in the 18, 19 that you're looking to get the money to finish, to pay off MMM and Lehigh?
We're looking to get the funding in at that point, so that it is available to pay when the schools, so we pay as you go then with the schools. We're paying for them as they go instead of doing the COPS.
So that amount for those two schools, though, would come out of the 115, or would it come out of the next year?
So the 105 is actually based on the Lehigh Senior Edition and Triple M. That's where the 105 is from, to give us the cash to do that.
So basically, you're saying that we would borrow with the TAN, the 105, in order to pay off MMM and Lehigh?
In order...
To have the money to pay them rather than carrying it over?
In order to have the cash when we need it, in order to pay for them. Because if I wait, I will not be able to pay for them in '20 when the bills come in.
We have to have the money to get the contracts going. And as you can see, what we are projecting to get in total revenue for the sales tax for the remainder of this year is the budget 39, and that number will change as we get our actual collections in. The 39 million with Lehigh and Triple M and even MM right behind it is not enough to pay for all of those schools and the maintenance that we have and the safety and technology. So that sales tax bond of 105 million gives us the cash in hand to get those projects started and getting paid for. Also, with a sales tax bond, what secures that note is the sales tax revenue. It is not the buildings that is being built with them. It is not the equipment, the stuff, the capital-intensive projects and equipment. So it is the revenue itself, and that is some of the added flexibility that a sales tax bond provides us above and beyond a COPS financing, which is specific to that facility, specific to that building, and even specific to however it's carved out. So it essentially is upfront cash that we are borrowing on anticipated revenue coming in to get these projects started, to get these projects going, and then as we carry on going forward.
And then we would use those funds for the next five years, and then in five years, you're saying do it again?
No, this is the only outstanding debt that we project to have through the whole 10-year period of the sales tax. Everything else will be paid as we go.
Oh, I see, that's just the total.
That's just the total, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I was looking at that as five years going forward. Okay, the last question is, what is the cost analysis of doing it with COPS and doing it with TAN? What are we saving, what are we spending?
Sure. And I'll ask Will to chime in here as well. The bottom line is that the cost will be significantly less from an interest, overall interest cost standpoint, using sales tax bonds, and it will be slightly lower from an interest rate standpoint, because the sales tax bonds will only go out nine, nine-and-a-half years. The COPS would go out 20 to 25 years, and so you'd be paying a much longer period of time at a higher rate reflective of that 25-year rate as opposed to that nine-year rate. So it's a much lower-cost method of financing for you. That's why we decided to get rid of the COPS and throw it all into the sales tax bond.
And then the thought of buying and paying for things now, if the cost goes up in a few years, then we're actually saving there as well.
You are, but what this does is this jumpstarts the process for you. You can't let the contract, as CFO Blarton said, without the money in hand. So this gives you the money in hand for this first pair of projects. And as you do that, as you spend that, you have the cash flow coming in from the sales tax itself, which will allow you to pay as you go for the rest of the projects. That's the idea here.
Have you done this type of thing without the note, doing it with the COPS, to show a comparison?
Yeah, it's actually a bond, not a note, just to clarify.
No, I mean, just a sheet that we can see. This is with one way and this is the other.
That actually exists in our five-year capital plan. It's how the COPS financing, and then also in our debt service fund, how much it increases that as well. Long-term and ultimately, with this sales tax revenue over the next 10 years and being able to pay for the majority of it, pay as we go with sales tax revenue and then this one piece of sales tax bond, by the time we get to the 10 years of the sales tax, a lot of our current COPS financing and debt that we currently hold, a significant portion of that starts to fall off significantly as well in about 2028, 2029. And so from a full debt perspective, our debt outlook, because of the sales tax and where we'll be, is going to be very positive.
Can we see it like this?
You can. You can't today, because we don't have that with us.
Oh, I know, but I mean, could you do it?
Yeah, Will has run numbers ad nauseam on this and started off running COP numbers on it, so Will, if you want to...
Okay, thank you.
The initial plan here, when we were initially looking at these projects, started a year, year and a half ago. And that's where we were initially looking at a note structure, because that would have given you the flexibility to repay that either with sales tax or with the COPS. Because of the timing of getting the construction projects lined up, it turns out that you were lucky enough to pass the sales tax, and our recommendation would be to use the sales tax in this avenue, even though it would be financing over a shorter period. It diversifies the obligations that you have. It is secured only by the sales tax and not by the property tax. So it allows you to use the basket of revenues that you'll have in a little bit more flexible manner, and you have more flexibility using bond proceeds out of a sales tax revenue bond than you do with a certificate of participation. So it gives you the maximum amount of flexibility and sets you up to be virtually debt-free after the 10-year sales tax has gone through.
Ms. Vaughn? Okay, on a different subject, I'm looking at rebuild Franklin Park and Cypress Lake, and I'm seeing there's nothing, am I reading this properly? There's nothing budgeted till '22, '23 on that?
So that's, remember, this is a five-year picture, and we're trying to look at when those would really be started. So we're really going to go back and get with Mr. Rickenbacher and figure out when we're really going to be able to do those. Those are, we're waiting on those Castaldi reports, and that's been taking a while. And so trying to project when they're actually going to be able to be started is, you know, kind of different. And we will also be looking at other, making sure all along the way that this is the best use of this funding. So we'll be looking to see if sales tax, impact fees, or capital outlay would be the best source as we go along on each project that we're looking at, because if we can get seats, extra seats at either one of those, it would actually be better to use a portion of our impact fees to cover some of that versus sales tax. So we'll be looking at that at all times. So if we can, if we're adding seats, I can use impact fees versus sales tax, and that's definitely going to be a better use of dollars for us. And we'll be looking at that all the time as we're moving forward.
Okay, and I know we have a capital project update later in this meeting, but I just wanted to clarify, okay, but a rebuild couldn't come out of the impact?
We can only use impact fees if additional seats are being added.
And this is a rebuild?
It's a rebuild, yes. If we work in the rebuild additional...
That was my understanding. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on that. Well, I'll be asking in capital project a little bit about, because it seems to me '22, '23...
It's possible that they can move, that they'll move up in the plan. The Castaldies have not been submitted to the DOE yet, and ultimately, these two projects may come off entirely. The DOE may say, "No, you can't do it." But it also, based on, and the DOE, you know, it all depends, but the process for them to review and go back and forth with the district for additional information typically is about six months. It could be longer. It could be a lot faster. And as that timeline starts to change for longer out or shorter term, you know, this plan will adjust accordingly, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. I think go on, oh, Ms. Morgan.
So I guess one comment. Dr. Atkins, how frequently will we be updated? Because the question, I think what board members want to know is that we'll see periodically what the changes are. So what is the plan for...
Typically, what we've done is similar to construction projects. When we do this, we look at a monthly update, so we can do that same pattern here.
And just a note related to that, the Independent Sales Certex Oversight Committee, we had a workshop with them last week and went through this in detail, a lot of very good questions, poignant questions. And so they decided as a committee that they'll be meeting on a quarterly basis and reviewing the budget to actual, what we have spent, and then what is coming forward over the next quarter before they meet again. So you'll also have them reporting to you. They meet quarterly, so going forward, after their quarterly meeting, they'll be reporting to the board as well, so. And then I know Susan...
Go ahead. I'll wait till Susan's.
Susan's going to, so again, what Susan is showing you, it was a concerted effort between our Information Systems Division, Trey Davis, Jim Short, and Jason Stanford. Jason really, and Jim, Dr. Short, built this with the input from Business Services, from our Operations Division, Lauren Stillwell and Laura Howard. This is a team effort in what you have here, and this ultimately is the public-facing page of our sales tax projects. What we have collected at a district level and then being... What we have collected at a district level and then being able to drill down specifically to the school. And again, full disclosure, disclaimer, the data that you see here is not actual data. It's demo data. So I know Susan has a school that she'll pull up and those of you that are watching, if you have kids that go to that school, that is not real data. That is not real data. But it will be, we, we also showed this to the, to the Oversight Committee last week as well. We showed it last, like we're doing now, and as we did that, they were like, oh, you should have led with that. That answered all of our questions. So this, our goal is we have this launched live at the next Oversight Committee's meeting on March 28th with the information and data there. So without further ado, Susan.
Good afternoon, everyone. So starting off, we have continued our theme of change for change. So from the change for change portion of the website, we will navigate to the district overview of the School District of Lee County's revenue and allocations of sales tax. So from the main site at the high level, we'll see on the far left, the sales tax revenue generated to date and then the interest income that we spoke of earlier and the prior year carryover. So again, this is all fictitional data and is just for illustrative purposes. As you recall, when we went out for our referendum and on our change for change website, we had four major categories of expenditures, construction, maintenance, safety and technology. On the right, our allocations will also add a fifth bucket, the reserve for future projects. So as money's coming in and it hasn't been spent, that will show in our allocations column. So you'll be able to hover over and see what the data is for each of those areas. So that's at the very top of the page as you scroll down. Well, we have our disclaimer that these are, that revenue estimates in projects are subject to modification. We know that all of our best estimates will be updated with real data as it comes in. And also this board may direct our priorities different than they are the day that we set out over the 10-year period, as would be expected. So the next we see the decomposition of the four allocation buckets. So as you scroll down, you'll see construction projects, maintenance, safety and technology. And under each one of them, this is the high-level district page, you'll see the maintenance projects that are budgeted and planned and the amount actually for those projects and the amount spent on those projects to date.
And, and those columns on the amount, the, the key is that, you know, this is the budgeted amount and then actually then showing what we spent. So that's as you get from the budgeted to the actual, it really starts painting the picture of, of the money at work.
Okay, so scrolling down, you'll see the four, the four buckets again, construction, maintenance, safety and technology. This is a scalable application, so if you have a mobile device, it will scale and you'll be able to see the data accordingly and it's also ADA compliant. Okay, so that's the high-level district page and then of course, everybody's going to want to know what's going on at my school. So we have another demo link to a school. This is Allen Park.
Not real data.
Not real data, especially that interest income, that would be a great percentage to earn, right?
Oh, and I wanted to make one key piece, that, that actual piece, school by school, the interest income, it will not be here because the interest that we earn on the money is when it's deposited, do not go to, it's, that's district funds. So actually, as we go forward with this, you'll, you won't see the interest income piece by school.
All right, so we landed on this page by going across the top. We have the district overview where we started and then we'll have our elementary schools, combo schools, middle schools and high schools and special centers. So you can scroll down and so we would have scrolled down and selected Allen Park. And so when you land on the Allen Park page, you'll see similar to the district main page. Up, up top, you will see the allocations that were for this school. This school doesn't have any construction, so it has only three of the four buckets. So it has maintenance, safety and technology in this demo data. And then as you scroll down to the bottom, you can see, of course, again, you can hover over and see the data and then you can scroll down and see the details of the amount and the expenditures in the three buckets, maintenance, safety and technology. In this information block that's currently empty, we'll be able to put here, for example, pictures of if there's a new outdoor canopy or a new gymnasium upgrade going on. We can provide for that particular site, updates of information, pictures, et cetera, to keep our community informed. Any questions?
Can you scroll down?
Sure.
Okay. I was just going to say, this is really great. I mean, it is fabulous. Thank you.
Ms. Givens.
Okay.
I know you're there.
Thank you. This is what I've been asking for, for quite a while. The only thing I would ask as well, like under projects, right there. And you have from March to June 19th, which is what, just giving you a window in case they don't, don't do it on March 30th?
Right.
Whatever, just to give you that window.
Correct.
Could, could there be another column for completed or something? Just to, I mean, you have what you will spend on it, but just something to say, okay, this one's done.
So the amount column is the amount that the project is budgeted for?
Right.
And the spent is the percent of work that has been done and paid. So for example, if the air conditioning unit was at a 50%, it would show the amount is 50,000. We'd spent 25, so you would know it's about 50% done.
Okay, but I'm.
If you want more detail, I, I know we're.
I'm just saying, I, I'm, I'm looking at it from the eyes of the community that doesn't understand all this anyway. So just to be able to say, we're between March and June, we're going to do this. This is how much it's going to cost. Just a column or something explaining that to them. I don't, and, and no offense to anybody in the community, but the subtracting it in the other column is more your level than theirs.
Absolutely, and the other area that we, in addition to that, is in that information area, we can say, you know, big air conditioning project scheduled to be complete by and have the dates.
And then the pictures.
And the, exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That, again, this is, this is awesome technology, dashboard technology that was a team effort all around, so. And, and once it's up and running, it, it's, it'll be awesome.
Ms. Givens.
So did Trey create this?
Jason Stanford from Trey's department.
He must have, he's grinning.
Hey, come on up and give kudos and, and let's not forget Lauren Stillwell and Laura Howard as well.
Okay, hello, everyone. So yeah, this was definitely a team effort, so you know, communications, ISD, you know, business and finance, just across the board, fantastic. You know, from a development standpoint, getting into the technical weeds there. Jason Stanford, our senior software engineer, you know, did the actual, you know, heavy lifting, so to speak, with regards to the coding. This is part of, and you may have heard about this, this is part of our visualization platform, open source platform that we used that doesn't cost the district a penny. There's no licensing involved here, something that we developed as part of our castle platform. So I think that's very important to note. And the fact that, you know, we can work live with data using our district databus, which is technology underneath the hood that, you know, you know, previously was funded and approved by the board. So that allows us to move data at will between, for example, PeopleSoft and what the public sees here, for example. So, so anyway, just wanted to let you know that, again, very much a team effort.
Susan doing the demo because she helped really, it's a lot of people in coordinating that effort. So it, thank you very much.
Ms. Givens, I'm sorry about your.
Yes, so I actually have already spoken to some of the members of the Oversight Committee and they loved this, the presentation, so they're very excited about it. So I just wanted to pass that word along, so thank you.
Ms. Vaughn.
Now, I, I wanted to echo what has already been said, this looks fabulous. Out of curiosity though, who gets to update this or is there like a magic something that?
There's a lot of fairy dust.
Do you ever understand that as this, these figures just jump into these?
It actually will be pulling real data from PeopleSoft, so actual data, actual numbers and, and revenue and expenses, what's actually been spent. So that, that communication between this program and PeopleSoft will be happening continuously.
I think the other item that ISOC was really impressed with was the interest rate that we're getting on very liquid cash investments. Do you want to talk about that?
It's, it's actually not bad rate, it's 2.5% currently.
And I think most of the committee was impressed.
Subject to change depending on the economy.
Just for those of us who grew up typing term papers on a manual typewriter to hear this.
You, not me.
Yeah, right, right. This is just, it boggles my mind that these numbers will just leap in there. Thank you, Trey and your department.
Just, just one other comment. As these processes, and I know you worked long and hard to do this, just a suggestion, we were talking on something else about doing monthly updates. I think that type of an update to say this is what we're doing and what we're working on would cause, cause less angst among people. Just to know where we're at in the process. And I guess it has to do with that transparency. This is what our goal is to do this and, and we're working on it.
Absolutely, and, and the Oversight Committee had some, some additional feedback and Lauren and her team in our operations. So you know, we do have significant projects, there's signage that says paid for with sales tax. Thank you, Lee County, for supporting this project is being supported by sales tax dollars. Having placards or information, however much and as we should be as proactive as possible in getting that message out of how this is going to work, how the money is going to work in this community. Absolutely.
Great, my final comment is the gentleman in the back who's tall said that we were lucky to pass the sales tax. I have to object to that, there was no luck involved, it was a lot of hard work. And so it's really a lot, it, it's very gratifying to see this start to come together and start to see where the money's going to go and see communities that are going to be impacted positively by it. No offense, but it really, it wasn't like a.
Come on up here and apologize, Will. Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
That's what the pit is for.
You don't have to. So this is, I accept your, yes, explanation. This is one of those briefings where I walk by just feeling like, you know, this is the kind of work that we should be doing, so thank you.
Okay, no longer do we have interest. One final comment I'd like to make is that this information, this demo is out here and manipulative. Before, we've seen a penny of sales tax. So there's been a lot of planning, all of the data that Ms. Letcher provided earlier, all the projects. We're constantly fine-tuning, gathering that data. We haven't seen anything yet, we've got our long-term plan, we have a, a live version of how we're going to display information and it's been very well received and I'm proud to be part of the team that's pulling this all together.
Ms. Givens.
When will this go live?
On the 28th of March.
Okay, thank you.
If you find as this is live and we get input from the community and you as well, that there are questions, and this is what I talked about before, kind of getting input from the community to find out, well, we really would like to see this or where is this?
Monthly meetings and absolutely.
And the reason I bring up stuff like that is when we're asked, then we're able to say, if this isn't showing what you need to see, let us know and we can let them know and we can fix it and give you what you need.
The communication. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Pruitt for succession planning. Hallstead and Ms. Christensen.
Hi, everybody, just trying to get the presentation up. So good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
I have with me Christine Christensen, who is professional development coordinator and Dr. Shelley Hallstead, who is coordinator in human resources. And why don't you see if you can find it while I go ahead and start. And what we're here this afternoon is to share with you a project slash initiative that we started, I want to say at the end of FY17. And that came out of conversation requests from the, some of the board members about having a formalized succession plan. And so we embarked on that, we began the process by looking at best practices because we knew that in order to do this systemically, we wanted to make sure that we were creating a really good foundation for that. And so that's how we began the process was by looking at best practices and trying to, you know, figure that out. And when you're looking at a succession planning, the three main components that you're looking at is defining what your current situation is, then defining what you want your future state to be and then figure out the scope of how you want to undertake that. And so that is, you know, sort of, we're kind of in the middle of that process where we are really kind of finishing up defining what our current state is and have been working towards our, our future state relative to succession planning. The idea is that we develop a comprehensive plan that will allow us to sort of build our benches, if you will, and then make sure that we are creating a professional development plan for folks that are interested in moving up throughout the organization. And so what I'm going to ask is Christine and Shelley are going to kind of talk you through sort of where we've been and where we're going and then I'll kind of tell you sort of the Angela long-term version of, of what I would like to see, you know, about five years down the road. And, you know, again, it's more than just putting names on a paper to say these people are interested in taking on this job, it's, it's much more comprehensive than that. So I'm going to turn it over to Shelley and she's going to kind of give you that high-level view and then Christine will tell you where we are so far.
Good afternoon. On the slide, you'll see, obviously it's labeled high-level process. So this is what succession planning looks like. And I wanted to give you some more details about what those steps entail. It's a cyclical process, so we repeat it annually. It's a, it's a living document, it's a living plan. We don't just do it once and put it on a shelf, sort of like emergency planning or strategic planning. The starting point for it is to identify the positions that you want to have the succession plans for. So for example, the chief level positions and those are selected by executive leadership. When you have those, you next need to determine the competencies for the daily work activities for those positions. Those are going to be used later in the process. The building of the talent pool, which comes next, is really about determining the eligibility requirements for who can be in the succession plan. So which employees are eligible to participate in that process. Once you have that, you have steps where, well, you have to realize that not every person that's eligible wants an executive leadership position. Some people are quite content where they are or they're interested in lateral transfers, other kinds of growth development, they don't necessarily want to be at the top level of an organization. So once you have that pool of eligible employees, the supervisors have coaching conversations with them to determine their interest level and what their career path ideas might be. And the ones that are interested in that kind of leadership opportunity are then considered to be candidates. So the candidates are then rated on the competencies that I mentioned in the beginning, the competencies for the job that would be on their career path. So for example, one of the chief positions. Once that's done, oh, and that would be part of the evaluation process in terms of the timing. So we have the annual final performance evaluations, you have your coaching conversation, your discussion of the career path, where people want to go into the future. And the rating process on the competencies would be part of that as well. I do want to say that that is not evaluative, so even though the. that that is not evaluative. So, even though the discussions are having, being held then, and the ratings are being done then, it's not related to the final performance rating. It's the timing of that conversation. Once all of the candidates have been identified and the competencies have been rated, that's the point at which we create a draft succession plan based on competency ratings and also on interest in specific positions. That plan is then taken to executive leadership and they start to look at where different people fit in that plan, what growth opportunities are needed. And that leads to the final two steps of selecting the finalists and finalizing the succession plan. So, at a really high level, that's what the annual process looks like. And we've been working on a project that will allow us to implement this process. So, we needed a lot of infrastructure in terms of technology, but also process development, competencies, that sort of thing. And the project that we're working on now will get us to the point of being able to implement this process. And I'm going to let Christine tell us about where we are.
Can I stop for a question? Ms. Gittens.
Thank you. Question is, does this replace or go in tandem with the pool process? Second question is on that discussion of leadership opportunities, is all of this done at the school level or what level?
So, because this is the beginning phases of this project, we're starting with the executive level positions, superintendent, the chiefs, and the executive directors. And once we have the infrastructure and those, that structure is set up, not only in process, just about how we do business, but also in our evaluations and in our PeopleSoft, then we will begin to roll it out into the, into the other levels of employees. And so, I do not see it as replacing the pool process. I would see that more as becoming part of that process is we're identifying folks. When I get to the long-term view, then I'll talk about how do I see that working with teachers to assistant principals to principals.
Thank you.
Sorry, my bad. Ms. Fisher.
So, when you are determining the process for identifying the talent and creating the talent pool, is there any component of self-identification? Or is this all done from?
No, self-identification is definitely part of the process of saying, because maybe we don't know that you, well, there's a couple of different avenues to that. So, one is I self-identify and I share when I'm having that succession planning conversation with my supervisor that here's some areas that I have an interest. You would get sort of rated on those. In other words, the competencies that you would need for those positions. And then we would work together, if I'm your supervisor, to say, okay, well, here's the things that you need to do to help progress you to get more ready, if you will, for that particular position. The other thing, and I'm kind of jumping ahead of myself, but in Angela's long-term view, it would also be that all employees would be rated on competencies that could be searched. So, that if I'm looking for someone in human resources and the competencies I've identified, I put a search in and it may identify somebody in trades division or somebody in academic services that either A) has the interest because they've self-identified or B) they have strong competencies, therefore their name would come up as a potential candidate.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Looking closer to the microphone, yes. So, where we are today, so we've created a detailed project plan based on the initial phase where we're at for the pilot. We've got a project manager for the technical side, who is Mrs. Bridget Adcock. And then I'm the project manager on the HR functional side. So, the project officially launched last April. We're in the final stages of configuration in the PeopleSoft tool. So, we're ready to go there and then we're almost ready to go there. And then we are, we are in the process of developing the training materials that will be provided to executive leadership on how to launch the process. So, we are on schedule as of today and anticipate that we will be.
So, again, this is one of those things that we had a lot of debate about and a lot of conversation and making sure that we set up the right foundation so that this project would be scalable across the district. And so, that was why going on the competency model and then determining that we will eventually rate, you know, all employees in my vision on the competencies and again, which is separate from the evaluation. Now, I would love to get where it's all together so that the evaluation would also identify some of those competencies that an employee may excel at that maybe isn't identified in some other conversations that they're having. So, what we've been spending a lot of time the last six months on is working with each of the different chiefs to determine what are the competencies that are needed in those areas. Because you can think about, there's some things that are universal competencies that it, like for example, at the chief level, you would want to make sure that, you know, someone understands what strategic planning is and can implement that. But there's some very specific things, for example, in Trey's area that, you know, I don't even understand some of the language when he's saying something. So, it was important to have them as part of that conversation to say, what are those? And we did it from a bank of, you know, best practice competency. So, we just didn't pull things out of a hat. There was a lot of that groundwork that was done to determine what is the best way to do this, where have other corporations and I will tell you, there's not a lot of school districts that have it formalized like we're attempting to do here and that we're implementing. But there is a lot of corporate structure that was able to give us some really good best practice and that. And so, we're very excited about it. But one of the main things we wanted to do was bring forward right now where we are because if there's some particular things that maybe we haven't thought of or that you as a board are interested in, you know, please think about this or what about this? And that's why we wanted to have this conversation today rather than be fully implemented and then somebody, well, wait, what about this? So, that's why we are coming to you right at this phase because, you know, input now is really important.
Ms. Jordan.
I was just curious, do we not already cross-train within the departments in order to never be held hostage if people were to leave? That way, someone else could actually take over that position.
We do. And that really, and I learned this when I was doing all my new learning about this about two years ago. That's really more for sort of the reactive approach. I cross-train you so that if something happens, I have you. Where a succession plan is more, I want to be proactive and say, what is it that you might want to be two jobs down the road, let's say? And let's, and let's train you and develop you and show you what you need to do to be able to get there. You have to do both. You have to have, what is the plan, you know, immediate if something occurs? And then what is this succession planning is the long-term.
Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, so let's create like a little scenario to illustrate this. So, let's just say that, and I think we need this position, the chief chocolatier position is done. He's, he's retiring. Willie Wonka's retiring.
We have to get consensus on that when you're done.
What?
Creating that position.
And there are two directors. There's a director of wrapped candies and a director of boxed candies. And they both are interested in this. But we have, all right, so what you're saying is, would they automatically, if they wish to move up, be in the pool? Or they have to?
In, in, in this scenario that you're providing and the structure that we have set up, those people would be potential candidates.
Okay, potential. And maybe there are a couple of people in other departments that have had chocolate experience.
And they would be identified because we would have done a search.
Search and they would have said, okay. So, at what point do we decide, well, all of these people, these four that we've identified in our pool right now, they're really good or very good, but maybe there's an excellent chocolatier out there. At what point do we say, well, now we need to do an outside search? That's, that's where I'm not clear.
So, in my view, you do that simultaneously. I think that you, I think that, so two things, you can't rely that there will be an excellent chocolatier somewhere else. So, that's why you have to be building your bench so that you're not left stuck. So, in my mind, that's also part of that pool is you still look for your external candidates that you would still, you know, rate against the competence, the competencies that we have determined makes you the best chocolatier. And then, then you go through that selection process giving equal opportunity to those you've homegrown and those from the outside.
Okay. And I guess it's the word pool that was a little bit of a stumbling block to me because we have the principal, the pool for, and that's really very different. That's, that's like-
Yeah, that, this is a whole separate process than that.
And so, all I'm saying is that that was a little confusing. I wanted to make sure that I understood what you were saying for these. Do you foresee then a change in pool as we move it down or?
I think there, I think that's, that's possible. The challenge with, and the reason that you have a principal pool and an AP pool is because there are statutory requirements for those positions. And so, there's a different kind of vetting. But I think if we have this set up right, that then we can, that can be part of that process. I mean, I, I think that, that is possible.
Yeah, okay. And as I said, that was really the stumbling block word for me, the pool. Because that, with my knowledge of what an assistant principal, principal pool is, it's like, okay, there's already a whole bunch of people out there looking for it when really, in reality, when you're up at these high levels, it's, it's going to be rather limited. Okay.
Correct.
Ms. Morgan?
Oh, one comment and then a couple of questions. My comment would be that I'm uncomfortable with the succession planning title. I would prefer to see something more like executive leadership, professional development. There's something about succession planning that says pipeline and whatever. And, you know, I think what we're really talking about is professional development at the senior, you know, whatever. So, that's just-
And building potential. You're right.
So, I'm just throwing that out. My real question is, and throwing this business about the statute regarding pool, to me, the biggest problem we have right now is depth in potential principals and assistant principals. And I'm wondering why we couldn't do our beta at the principal level and try to incorporate in that level the pool requirements that are laid out in statute. Because what I heard, here's what I heard you say. I heard you say that you're starting with the fewest number of positions and then working your way down to the max. And I guess what I'm looking, and that's going to take time. I'm concerned about our short-term and intermediate-term problem. And is there a way to beta do this at the?
So, maybe what I would say to you is there's a whole lot of things that are going on in leadership that you're probably not aware of and what we have done to build those benches. So, maybe we need to come before you and show you what we have done in those areas and the strides that have been made in the last year or two years since we've had somebody who was able to part of their job focus on the leadership and the systemic what we have done. And because I'm feeling much better now relative to that. So, that probably is why because we, there's this whole other leadership track that's focused on assistant principals and principals and building the bench. And so-
Just, those are my comments.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Gittens.
I have one kind of burning question for me. How and when do you decide, like if you're looking for an executive position, at what point do you make the decision to look outside as well as looking at the succession plan?
Well, currently, and I would recommend this moving forward, you do it simultaneously. I think you, like, that's what we do now is it's, we, we, it's open to everyone with a, you know, a focused plan on advertising where we would find that talent, you know? So, so certain positions, you know, those folks go to certain places to look for positions as well as the global avenues that are utilized sort of across the industry.
The other question has to do with the diversity piece. And I know I've talked to the superintendent about this before, how, I know it's a very fine line as to not selecting minorities, so to speak. But is it possible for us to be able to see, maybe on a periodic basis, that there were this number of applicants of which this number were minorities? There were this number of interviews of which this number were minorities? And then the final, you know, was a minority chosen. No names, just-
So, the challenge there is they don't have to report it. So, and once they're hired, we know. But in terms of when they apply, and, and so, yes, we can provide you the data that we have, but I would, there would be this big caution flag that says, you know, there may be 40% of the applicants that we don't know. And I certainly wouldn't want to be making guesses on that. So, that's the challenge is that we don't always know exactly for positions-
And that's interesting.
The demographics of-
Just on a personal note, that's interesting to me that in 2019, someone would not put their delineation because of a concern one way or the other. I, just, it's not a question. I'm just throwing it out there.
Questions, comments? I just feel badly for Mr. Davis. He's so misunderstood by everybody. Seems to be universal at the school district.
Maybe he's going to be the chocolatier.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, I think we have Mr. Rickembacher.
Do you have chocolate? Otherwise, go back.
Good afternoon, board members.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. On this month.
Hi.
Good afternoon, lots going on. This is the update for March 12th, 2019. I switched it up a little bit. I will speak a little bit at the end about MMM. We have some good news that came through, but I didn't have any fresh news prior to that just coming on board. Eastone Middle School, MM, proud to say we have our water management permit. So, we're ready to go once contracts are let, negotiated, and design drawings are created. So, that was a big step for that site. The building official rankings were approved by the board in February 26. The Phase 1 pre-construction budget estimate was approved by the board on the 26th as well. So, the funding is there. And we anticipate sometime in this month to get contract negotiations in place for the architect, construction manager, and the building official. Thank you. Let's see. We'll find out. South Florida Water Management, we anticipated it. At the time I wrote this up two weeks prior, well, we have it now. So, that's good news for the MM Middle School site at sunrise. Little bit of a switch. I wanted to just show you some of the other projects we do. These are the projects we engage with maintenance, some of their GSA contracts, some RFQ contracts. But we help maintenance do some of these larger projects to provide paperwork, following, and inspections and so forth. You have the new switchgear we activated at the Eider Baker Central Energy Plant on February 18th and 19th. The Phase 1 800-ton chiller is in place and we're getting ready to fire that up at spring break. We have the Phase 2 portion of the Eider Baker, which is actually jetting under Agulinda Boulevard, heading over towards Gulf Elementary and Gulf Middle and School Q. And that is hopefully to be completed prior to the rainy season. So, there are a couple pictures of Tina Silcox, a project manager's handiwork. She likes her colors and makes sure everything looks professional. Lehigh Senior High School, we started pouring the slab on grade. The foundations are done around the school. And if you were to go out there today, you actually see some flatwork going on. We are about three days behind schedule, but that's not a problem. We were four to five days last week and we made up time due to the weather that we had and that inclement rain. And we're comfortable it's not going to be an issue whatsoever. We have our duck work and electrical rough-in in Buildings 3 and 4 complete. That was what was the old media center. New addition building right now. All the footings are just about 100% poured. All the footings are just about 100% poured, and we began the slab-on-grade and underslab utilities. And rebar obviously was placed. Project still on schedule for July, I believe it's the 17th of 2019 opening. This is just another example of some of the projects that Ms. Silcox works on, sharing with maintenance, some of the upcoming energy plant HVAC replacements, the funding. Some of this could be through Jimmy's capital project budget, it could be through the sales tax, help with this, but these are just some of the jobs you can see that are going to be coming forward here.
Scott, if you could just go a little bit deeper into the Ida Baker Central Energy Plant. I mean, I just think that's just a really cool project that I'd like for you to expand on for the board.
Sure. The Ida Baker School project, the air-cooled chillers and the water tanks out there had failed. The school was opened, I believe, in 2005, 2006, 2005, I believe. And so we decided, concept to save dollars, energy, and maintenance costs, we created a central energy plant, and that's over behind Ida Baker High School. The intent was to create a much larger plant with multiple pumps, multiple chillers, multiple water tanks, or cooling tanks, jet underneath the street, across Agawalinda Boulevard, over to three other school campuses across the street. So they'll be tied into our central energy plant, which ultimately, it saves in maintenance costs, it saves in energy, and it just makes a central point more maintainable, but I think you're going to really see it in the energy cost savings returns.
Awesome.
Can I ask a question that's kind of like, kind of on that? And I asked this question the other night at ISOC, and I didn't feel like I got a great answer from anybody other than Mr. Mazurkowitz. How do we determine the priority of projects, especially as the half penny sales tax revenue is coming in? Do we have a process in place? Is there a formula we use? Or is it the principal that complains the loudest gets his project done first?
I can speak to my projects. Mine are easy. There's usually only four or five big ones, the capital projects, but all the other projects, maintenance and finance, they've all created a very long 10-year projection. I might arguably say it's the rotation list of years back when we had funding, re-energized, the need assessed for safety, Parkland's changed everything for safety, maintenance, roofs, structure. They have that list, and I believe that's how they're reporting to the ISOC committee, a two-year look ahead.
So, well, go ahead, finish out.
That's fine.
So, if you look at, what is the expected, the life expectancy for a roof on a particular building, as an example?
Sadly, some of them go in 11 years. Some of the metal roofs will last a little bit longer, 15. Some of the clay tile roofs can go 20. It all depends on the maintenance, it all depends on the conditions and the storms that we get. We're putting in better products, so we hope to get longer longevity out of these roofs. You know, remember too, for a maintenance perspective, back when I started here, they probably had close to a $30 million budget with 150 employees in 80 buildings. We're now at over 120 buildings, the same 150 employees, and don't quote me, but I think the budget was somewhere around 13 or 14 million, since we had the slowdown in the economy. So we've been able to maintain and do what we can on roofs and on chillers, and the maintenance department, I think, has been a pretty good job, done a pretty good job with the limited funds they had to keep this system going. And now with this injection of the money, I think we can get back to where we maintain things, we're able to keep up with things, and start moving into the schools, blinds, carpeting, VCT, all those things that, you know, we just had to make do during those lean times.
The point, I think, the question that she's asking is, is you look at the life expectancy of that particular product in that building, and then from that, you build your rotation schedule.
That's correct.
Ms. Gittens.
Okay, three quick-
Yeah, and Susan, just reminded, we do meet every two weeks now for what we call the capital committee, and that's where the projects, the small projects and immediate need projects come forward from the schools, and it's discussed at the table. We talk about financing, we talk about scheduling, and the ability to accomplish those jobs.
Ms. Gittens.
Okay, three quick questions. The plan for MMM, is it the same as our previous middle schools, or is it using a different plan?
No, we're using, right now, we're going to use the Harnes Marsh, the prototype for the middle school. We actually went out to Harnes Marsh, and everything we got from administration was they loved the building.
And are there any, did you have to make adjustments or any-
There will be. For, if that school is going to be a shelter, we're going to have to do some structural changes to that, and unfortunately, I can't, I have to go with the ICC 500 code, and that's going to be pretty expensive. I'm still working right now, trying to get Lee County to commit to pay for the costs for MMM High School, so.
With the addition of these buildings, and you mentioned that you had 120 buildings and 150 people in maintenance, are we looking to increase the number of people in maintenance because we're adding all these schools?
I can't speak for maintenance, ma'am, that is under Mr. Flock's control. I can speak for my division, and certainly as we engage in these new school constructions and some of the half penny sales tax jobs that we will get from Jimmy's division, yes, I need to man up.
I like that. And this question kind of goes to you, and to Trey, and to Mr. Blerton. Your timeline, the HVAC capital project timeline, is a good example of how we can put that information out there, not giving you extra things to do, but it's just kind of what I was mentioning in columns. Thank you.
Dr. Atkins.
Just to come back to Chair Gittens' question as it relates to the other departments, I mean, it's a similar thing as that you find in Mr. Rickembacher's area, is we are going to have to staff up as we increase the number of buildings, and also as we look to really implement a rotation schedule the way that we really need to implement a rotation schedule. So, human capital, when it comes to referendum items, is going to continue to be an area that we're going to have to look at, like, increasing the, which is a good thing, to be able to keep up with the work that we need to do.
Agreed.
But that's paid out of operating, right? So if we hire people, that's paid out of operating, but if we hire out, it's not? Go ahead.
Well, if we are, if we have an individual whose primary responsibility is maintaining a capital asset, then that is a, that is something we can pay out of our capital budget.
Okay.
But we have to be very clear. And one of the things that, you know, that we have to look at is, give you an example, building supervisor, there's various opinions about a building supervisor, and it really boils down to what are the essential functions of a building supervisor? If a building supervisor is used to clean up, to do cafeteria duty, and things like that, then that is, that has to come out of the general fund. If you have somebody that's assigned to, you know, maintaining your chiller plant, then that's something that could be considered a capital, you know, asset.
Right. Ms. Fisher, sorry.
Okay, so, backing up to when you said you went out to Harnes Marsh, a prototype, to look at it in anticipation of MMM, what qualifies the administrator to say they love the building? Is there any other information that is gathered regarding the usability, the wear and tear, the functionality of that prototype when it's, when the kids are actually in there?
The school, the administrators, the principal, vice principal, they're the end-users, they're the customer. So we've asked them, how do you like your custom-built home? How does it work for you? How does the movement of the students throughout the school? How does, how do the areas for curriculum work for you? And we've heard nothing but positive things. I think you'll find that at Challenger, I think you'll find that at Harnes Marsh. I can't speak to the other school, I haven't been there to speak to those folks.
So that is then, the evaluation of the building is done that way by the administration?
We created a prototype, and there's been, always been the academic side of the house involved in those designs, and the intent was to be able to use that for a 10-year period or longer, so long as it met the current need. And we went out there to ask the question and evaluate, and everyone seems to be saying that, yes, it does. Now, I can move in any direction this board desires as a superintendent, but certainly we-
Well, one of the other things, though, if you look at other, if you look at, like, the operational plant itself, you look at the chiller plant, you look at the roof, the windows, those are also things I know that we evaluate. For example, if you look at the difference between Harnes Marsh Elementary School, and you compare that to Tortuga Preserve, there certainly were some significant upgrades in terms of lighting, the chiller plant, things like that, that we look and evaluate, is this a better direction which we can go in? And as a result, you're going to, you know, they're constantly improving the building, and in that case, you're talking about energy consumption. You know, you've got LED lighting, you have, I believe, a magnetic chiller at Tortuga-
That is correct.
And therefore, you know, the actual electric or the energy consumption of that building is significantly less. So that's an example of something else that we do get input from, you know, Scott's folks and also our maintenance. You know, Mr. Flock and his team are going to weigh in on, are these things that we're putting in, such as the flooring systems? You know, we've made changes in flooring, as an example, because some of our flooring systems require much more maintenance than other flooring systems. And so those are things I know that are part of that evaluation. Yes, we do. I think when you talk about the functionality of the building, you know, I know that, for example, Mike McNerney had a lot of input into the design of Island Coast, and that was based on what worked really well at Ida Baker and East Lee County and South, and they constantly made improvements to where that was, that building highly refined. And then we went from that down to Bonita Springs. Jeff and the team made some recommendations that would enhance the security of those buildings based on functionality, so all of that stuff goes into-
Correct. It's just the appearance. The code has changed to 2014 energy code, so basically, all the mechanicals and the meat and potatoes of the school will be updated to current codes. When I say it met the needs of the administration, the fish capacities, the rooms, the flow of the school, and the ability to get back and forth between the buildings.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn, did I hear him?
Yes. I want to go back to something that I asked when Mr. Blerton and Finance, when they were talking, and I asked about funds from our taxes, our half-cent sales tax, and my question was, I saw that the rebuilds under the, for Franklin Park and for Cypress Lake Middle under the 2223, and he explained, okay, there are other sources, et cetera. Bottom line, my question is to you, do we have a date for the rebuild?
The day we get it go, three years.
Well, so as soon as those reports from the state come in, if they say we can rebuild?
For you, but I'll speak quickly.
Yeah.
Okay, the process is, once the board and the school and the seat capacities are a need, and I'm directed to move forward, okay? We do what we call the RFQ process. Typically, RFQ process to contractors, a four- to five-month process. We gained our bidders, now we got a design. So it's an eight-month to 12-month design period. Even though we're using our prototype, I just spoke about the interior being updated in the energy code. And in a high school, it's roughly 18 to 20 months to physically build. A middle school is about 14 months, and in elementary is between 12 and 13. Now, throw in the Army Corps if you have wetlands on that property, you can't put the first shovel in the ground until the Army Corps has released your permit. So what we've done at MMM is we ran early with the permitting to get that going, to start the clock, and we engaged in our new process, Phase 1 and Phase 2, to get the designer on board, to get the design going, so that we knew, knew the moment the permit was going to be released, we'd be able to go out for bid, public bid, hard numbers, come to you for a total project cost approval, and begin construction, and that's when that time clock begins.
But I'm only, I'm only talking about Franklin Park.
A school's a school. Franklin Park, you have the Castaldi, that could take up to six months. Now, let's assume positively that it gets approved.
Okay.
I then start the RFQ process. So that's six months.
And then you're talking about that same process. Now, let me ask you this. Knowing that we want to, in the best scenario, to rebuild these schools, what happens with maintenance? Let's say it takes five years until we get to the point where we're actually rebuilding, does that mean that these schools continue to deteriorate?
You make, obviously, you have to have air conditioning. So maybe you buy an air-cooled chiller that you know that you can pull in two years' time and utilize as a replacement at another campus. You do roof repairs, even just to get you through. You obviously keep the environment safe for the children, you have to do what you need to do, but you minimize that impact. Over the course of time, there is always an exposure, that's why it's critical to make a decision quickly. You don't want to keep putting good money into bad, so.
And I understand that, and I intend to get out to Franklin Park, I haven't had that opportunity, but I did tour Cypress Lake Middle quite a few months ago, and conditions there, to me, were rather appalling compared to some, you know, some of our newer schools, and even some schools that aren't that new, that have been maintained in a different way. Now, I understand, I'm going to guess, that when Cypress Middle was built, it looks like it was built with really shoddy workmanship, and, you know, there's some design factors, like with the roof and all of that. But on the other hand, you know, for a school for five years, let's say, to limp along, it concerns me.
And I hear your concern, and I'm sure that our maintenance folks also hear that concern, and I can assure you that the mindset is, what's best for the children, what's best for the environment, will always be done in our two divisions, providing the funding is there.
And that last piece that you said, yeah. I'm done.
One quick question. You said something about DOE approval. Do we have the final DOE approval for MMM and MMM?
Oh, DOE? No, I spoke about Army Corps approval.
No, I mean, previously, earlier on, when you were talking, you mentioned about-
Yeah, when we get the spot survey, when we get the spot survey approved, that is our green light to go, to start anticipating and create the design. MMN's already there. We're now doing our horror fish count. It's a computerized system, and it's tenuous at best, but we have the numbers. The permit that I am excited about is, we just heard that we are going to be, within a month, they finished their report, and they're basically typing it up, we have, we'll be getting in a month our Army Corps permit, our release. So I actually may be able to release the construction manager to solicit bids and actually get a jump on the project.
And are both schools going to have the ability to add on if necessary?
Yes, it is. We actually created a space inside the central energy plant at MMM High School in anticipation of a third chiller. We have two wings on each side of the stairwell of what we call the T, and that T is what Dr. Atkins said. That's been the generations throughout, just the high schools particularly, starting with the three prototypes, Island Coast, South, and East Lee, then to Island Coast, and of course, now Bonita, and we're carrying that forth at MMM. We have areas where we can add eight additional classrooms to the building, should we need to get the capacity, and that could be added very quickly. So our mechanicals inside the building, our electricals are all set and prepped for that, so that could potentially be a school that could go to 2,500 student stations, similar to what's occurring at Lehigh Senior.
With Lehigh Senior, was there the potential to add on as opposed to adding another building?
At Lehigh Senior High School?
Yes.
No, you're, I think, personally, I think you're at your max. The facility, meaning the clinic, the cafeteria, the number of lunch shifts that they serve, typically they do four, and you've already, you've got 500 kids plus. Now, we put a big outdoor dining pavilion, and that's great if you have the ability and on outside wall where you can place that to accommodate those kids eating. Our cafeteria people can make food and get it out to those kids quickly, but something like Ida Baker, it's landlocked, there's nowhere to go, so they started using some of those hallways at Ida Baker and South as like a bistro area to try and get that capacity. But I think, I think you'd be hard-pressed without doing some major, major accommodations to go above 2,500 at Lehigh Senior High School.
Right, I meant with the additions that they have now, do we have all of the capacity?
Yep. That outdoor dining was designed, and we're actually on the interior, we're increasing the size of the clinic for that added capacity.
Thank you.
Mr. Rickembacher, as you talk about being at capacity, we sometimes don't think about the impact on the community and student athletes in particular, when they've earned a home team, home field, home court advantage in playoffs, and they have to have their game moved to a neutral site, and then they lose because they no longer have home court advantage. I know Riverdale ran into that circumstance, I think Fort Myers, Fort Myers High School may have run into that with basketball this year. I know Riverdale desperately wants a new gymnasium that can acco- I know Riverdale desperately wants a new gymnasium that can accommodate their community. It can't, it's not big enough to accommodate their community. We simply have too many students for the initial infrastructure that was put there. Ms. Jordan?
Yeah, I just had two questions. One is, who decides whether the school is to be a shelter? I know you were speaking about the county...
Right now, the county...
...partake.
The county, I want to say, is at a deficit of 30,000 shelter spots.
Yeah.
And don't quote me on that, but I think that was the number. This county has a severe deficit for shelter space. So we're obligated by statute to engage with them and come up with that need. And that was actually even reiterated, I believe, in January. There was this whole emergency shelter portfolio put out by the state in conjunction with DOE. It's called the Tornatic and Hurricane. It makes up that ICC 500 code section I was telling you about. So we're obligated to work with them. Doesn't mean if we can't come to a mutual understanding that we have to, but we have to make that college try. And that's what we're doing. Typically, in the past, they have asked when we've built new schools that are typically east of 75 or outside of that title, that flood zone, if we would work with them, and we have. And the last two that I did were Island Coast and Harons Marsh. And they bore the full cost of those escalation and costs to accommodate that.
Okay. And then the second thing, I think the concern too, that Ms. Vaughn was speaking on, and I know, I hear it out there all the time, everyone has, I'm sure, Franklin Park and Cypress. We want to make sure that those schools are not forgotten because, I mean, it's the shape that they're in right now, and for them to go forward for all those years, we have to make sure that we are maintaining for those children.
No, and I agree. That's, the minute I spoke at our CAC committee, I went ahead, the superintendent gave me the approval. We engaged with the architect to update that immediately. I'm hoping to have that updated report next week. And then I'll come forward as soon as the superintendent, and I can get on the docket to get here, to get your approval, to allow him to move it forward to the state. And you do have a lot of other older schools, Tropic Isles, Fort Myers Beach. You know, this is going to be a continuing discussion over the years that I think you all will have.
How does the extra space that's not being used at James Stephens affect us when we're asking for additional schools?
Well, actually, it's affecting us at this moment in time. I understand why the decision had to be made for that school at that moment in time. But that's part of the reason I can't move forward with that elementary school next to MM that I'm prepping the site for, is because of spot survey. We can't validate the numbers. So we're hoping to go back around July. I believe Dominic is going, who's the number guy, he's going to go and see if we can do a spot survey in July to get that moving forward, but...
And I can speak to that because as part of our five-year plan survey, which we do every five years, the additional capacity at James Stephens, those seats showing up in our overall capacity in the east zone were there. And so that precluded us from not being able to go forward within that five-year plan for the elementary school. They saw it just outside that we would need it, but we would not, we were not able to have that as part of the five-year plan survey. But as we go past that time and as things go, it's, that's outside of that five years that we'll come back for it. And we can always do, such as Benita Springs High School, the needs and the growth were there. We can always do a spot survey for a school. It's basically us providing the information, the data to the DOE. They look at it and say, yes, we approve you to go ahead and go forward and build that school.
Just one quick question, I'm sorry, Greg. Is that, will that, or could it then affect Franklin Park because of the location of where Franklin Park is at?
No. So in that, and ultimately, the DOE, when they look at the Castaldi, all of the information that we have, and that's all a part of their consideration. I mean, a lot of the consideration is the, is the current state of the facility, of the school, a lot of the things that were just discussed. There's a lot of information that they look at. And our understanding, and we haven't been through one, I don't know if we've been through one at all. You have?
Long ago, yeah. Tice and Dunbar.
That's right. That's right. So it's a long process, and it's, we're very hopeful that they'll, they'll see the need that is there, and that we can go ahead and rebuild those two schools.
Actually, this question is for Dr. Atkins. Have we ever thought about putting James Stephens back to a middle school? Because that's what it was. I mean, I went to it as a middle school. So, I mean, would the need, would that help with numbers?
I don't know if you want to take that one. I know that we do look at, when we talk about capacities, we look at the middle school numbers that are out there and the elementary schools, and that's when we ultimately came to the decision, in the short term, we would, we would go the elementary route, which is what we did. And I think it was, overall, it was a good decision. The middle school, the difficulty with middle school at the time we made that decision was that we couldn't provide middle school students with all the offerings that we could at a full site. There was also, I know at the time we made that decision, a concern regarding, you know, having the discipline management of those students on site with the elementary kids. That was another consideration. And then we looked at capacity numbers in the east and the south zone, as I recall, and decided to go short with the elementary option. The conversion back, because we had to spend money to get it really converted to a K8, because originally, like you said, it was a middle school. It would, it would also cost us money to go back to outfit it as a middle school again. I don't know if you have anything to add to that in terms of capacity, maybe?
From pure capacity, as you said, and all the other considerations too, of going from, you know, the current elementary school and making it a K8 again, you know, just, there's a lot of different factors from an academic perspective, capacity perspective, cost perspective, you know, as, you know, always looking at the trends of enrollment and where the enrollment is going in our growth. You know, if that ultimately is the best-case scenario to have middle schoolers, because we have capacity there, rather than another middle school or what have you, just as all the factors change year to year, it's, we have capacity, and it's always something that's in the back of our mind and that we need to discuss.
The challenge with those sites, when you look at James Stephens, even Franklin Park, Edgewood, is where is your student population relative to your school?
To the school.
That's our biggest challenge, because we, we don't have as many students that live in close proximity to those schools as opposed to what we see out in Lehigh Acres. I know that that particularly is problematic with, you know, with Edgewood. That's why we are looking, as we move forward, we really, we'd like to bring in a consultant who's an expert at looking at school boundaries. We're considering the consultant that worked on the Charlotte Mecklenburg project a few years ago, to come in and look at what we might be able to do from our boundaries, so that you take a school like Edgewood Elementary or James Stephens International, and if you expand those boundary lines or open up those boundary lines, allow students to come in from different parts of the county, we may be able to utilize our capacity more effective than what we currently are doing with the existing system. Edgewood's probably our best example because it's tucked into a corner, and so you've got a lot of students that have to come by, a great number of schools to come to that school. And so that, that helps to exacerbate that mobility issue that we have always had at that school since we put the zone system in place. And if we instead maybe look at open up boundaries to where you can look, tap into west zone and south zone at Edgewood, and give them a 360-degree draw, we may be able to help solve some of the issues that we're currently facing there.
Great. Other questions, comments? Do we have any questions on the change order memo for Mr. Rickemacher? Being done, I think we're good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a great day.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to offer a public comment?
Yeah, I would like to. My name's Randy Scott.
Attorney Doughty, could you please address the matter?
Sure. No personal attacks. The subject of comment is limited to those items on the agenda at a briefing meeting. Time permitted is three minutes.
Begin. You can begin.
You're on.
Okay. When you weigh what the staff says, sitting right here, you should equally weigh what they're not telling you. When Kelly stood up here, she was applauded for talking about the conservative numbers for the sales tax. I don't think it's staff's obligations or requirement that they gatekeep what you know. So if she's talking, she's only giving you conservative numbers, you should know what the other numbers are too. Case in point, why didn't we give conservative numbers for the enrollment figures? We're seeing enrollment figures 2,000. The truth is, Mr. Blerton said at an FAC meeting, that it was 800. And I got it down to even less than that with the graduation retention of over 862. Your staff needs to be more diligent in providing you all the information, not just one side, but the entire side. And as you notice, Ford and Associates applauded her, said it over and over again. She's conservative. She's giving you conservative information. He's your consultant. He's the one that should also correct her and say, give them all of it. Let them know what the whole thing is, not just some of it. We're seeing a very heavily tilted administrative state here that's supporting facts that aren't necessarily true. And as you know, I'm a member, I was a member of the FAC committee, and because I brought up these facts, and in fact, some of you have an Excel spreadsheet that was sent to you today. I created that July 28, 2018. It shows that the amount of money you're going to get for the revenue is going to be 1.2 billion. They didn't address exactly what they're getting, but in your last agenda, they showed $31 million amendment. That's for January, February, and March. They're already telling you in numbers that you're not really looking at, that they're looking over 120 million a year. So it's not what they say to you, it's what they don't say to you. It's what people like me, who might be looked at as a little controversial, what I say to you is magnified to the point of what they're not saying to you. And I think I'm more on the point of truth. Case in point, the only one that didn't have a PowerPoint up here was the sales tax. That's the only one that didn't have a PowerPoint. They don't want it out on the public. They don't want people like me actually evaluating it. It's a mess. It needs to change. You're bored, you're being manipulated. Have a good day. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is board members' comments. Board, I'd like to bring your attention to the time. It's 4:40. I'd like to suggest that if possible, we end the meeting by 5:00 with a hard end time of 5:15 in anticipation of our action meeting this evening. Ms. Fisher?
Okay, I'll be very brief. I wanted to mention the art walk in Fort Myers, where 40 of our schools participated. It was a highly successful event. I heard from the mayor of Fort Myers that he wants to do more of that, and the feedback from the community was great. I want to thank the schools who participated, and I know more will next time. And I also wanted to thank Dr. Santini and his team for pulling that together. I had an opportunity Saturday to attend the Learning for Life Talent Show along with Mrs. Giovinelli, the ninth annual. It was quite amazing, and when I thought to myself, what else could these kids be doing on a Saturday afternoon? But here they were, having their confidence built, showing their talents, and being supported by their families and the rest of the community. So thank you to Learning for Life for the continued efforts that they make to provide our kids with positive activities. I want to thank Insurance Task Force for their constant updates to employees about the upcoming changes April 1st, the wellness opportunities, the fact that we have another lab available to us now besides, we have LabCorp in addition to Quest. And I want to thank them for their continued work in keeping us informed. Also, I was at Cape Coral High School and with the Drug Free Coalition, where the SAD Club was presenting local law enforcement with a thanks for the work that they do and for their partnership. The Drug Free Coalition continues to use money raised in the community and through the run and other activities, and also with grants that they get to provide prevention activities for our kids, which keep them safe, healthy, and away from substances. And I think that I have a comment about some of the things I've seen in the news lately regarding vaping and juuling, the use of substances by our students, the human trafficking problem. And we, in 2017, passed our comprehensive health education policy, and part of that said, beginning the 2017-18 school year, all schools will implement the district-approved, evidence-based, age-appropriate, and comprehensive health education academic plans. That is not happening, and I think that we need to ask Dr. Atkins and his staff to revisit that, because with comprehensive, comprehensive health education, we can cover nutrition, activity, exercise, don't touch your parents' medications. I mean, there are so many things that are part of that program that could be helping us preventing a lot of the issues that we're dealing with now that are becoming newsworthy. So I really would like for us to be able to revisit that and make that a part of our academic plans. And that's it. That's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. Giovinelli?
I don't have much either. I just want to support what Mary just was talking about, because I think that's being proactive instead of reactive. And if we don't help these students now, it's going to affect them long-term and out of high school, and so I agree with you. And I enjoyed the Learning for Life, being a judge, that was very exciting, my first time, and I enjoyed that on Saturday. It was a great opportunity. Tina does a great job, and Learning for Life is a really great skills for these students. I really don't have anything else. I'm going to have to go to break. Thank you.
Okay, me. I have been several places in the community within the last week, visiting different schools. I went to Women Build through Habitat, with Ms. Fisher was there as well. And I must have left my seat, because when I came back, I was on a team.
You left your seat.
I don't know what happened, but now I'm building a house, which will be great. Also, I was able to judge the students at the Lee County Fairgrounds, and they were just amazing. And it was, that was the most difficult thing I've had to do, was to judge those kids, because they all received a hundred from me. So, but it was, it was really great, and that's all I have to say.
Ms. Atkins?
I have, the word is reading across America, I have read across Lee County. I think I have been to a plethora of schools, and I have a, something to share this evening with that, a picture that will probably bring tears to your eyes, but it was a wonderful experience. I don't know if, Ms. Fisher, did you mention, well, no, some of the, I think you visited the Future Makers, and so did you, and I'll leave that to you to mention. However, it was, it was fabulous to listen to those students talk and discuss their issues. I also did the downtown Fort Myers. We walked and walked and walked some more. But it has been a busy time in the last couple of weeks, and I have a couple of other things that I'll mention this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn?
I want to echo what, what Mary Fisher said about the comprehensive health program. I too am a big supporter of that. I am on that committee and also on the early childhood, the Head Start Committee. And I'm going to be exploring, as well as the Curriculum Advisory Committee, of which I'm fully assigned, we're going to be exploring ways in which we can use the kinds of things that they teach, and the conscious discipline, and the kinds of things that they teach in the early childhood learning programs, and look at perhaps advancing those at least through our primary grades. And along with the idea of comprehensive health education, there's a lot of age-appropriate tools that they teach the children on socio, social-emotional growth. You know, it's, it's health when they're teaching... You know, it's health when they're teaching them to wash their hands and to brush their teeth after meals and, and just so many things that they're doing. And I always like to start from the bottom up. So it's, it's my hope that working with those two committees, and actually the three committees that I'm on, we can really develop an aligned program to help our youngest children and have that move up through the grades. And that's all I wanted to say this afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
So I'm going to, I think what I'm going to do is send mine out in an email. I will just mention that I did the Future Maker Youth Leading Lee County Summit. I look forward to reading the notes that come from the conference. I will send you, I think there were some interesting things that I got from it. Kids Tag Art, the text collector's office donated $800 to every fifth-grade art teacher participating in the program. Finding Your Path to Success, Denise Carlin moderated, Rita Davis, Lori Brooks, and another individual from FSW on panel on navigating choices and finding paths in high school. My only comment about reading is do not follow Jason Sill because I walked into a classroom when Jason Sill was standing in front of a whiteboard, dancing and reading a story out loud. And I had to sit in a chair and read from the book after that. Dunbar Business Advisory, some really good stuff. I'll pass that on. And I attended the barbecue honoring Colonel Aviles on his return. So, but what I really want to get to is that, after a lot of soul searching, and I've tried to get together with Gwen, and we are just not getting our schedules together. So I'm going to do this now. I need to apologize and want to apologize to Gwen and Betsy. I made a telephone call to each of them in an angry tone that reflected my frustration with the way of work of the board. And that was unprofessional and disrespectful. And I regret having done it, and I want you to know that I do. You are entitled to respect from me as elected members of this school board, and I was unprofessional in my conduct, and I hope that I can conduct myself in a more professional manner going forward in my working relationship with both of you. Those are my comments.
Yes, thank you. I absolutely appreciate your saying that.
Thank you.
And I do. And we will get to that.
We will someday.
Okay, I'll try to go quickly. Two past two weekends have been FHSA championships for me, girls' basketball, followed by wrestling. Wrestling was the craziest thing I have ever experienced in my whole entire life. It was, it was crazy. It was the most organized, fantastic chaos I've ever seen in my whole entire. So I didn't realize we had wrestlers in Lee County other than those that attended Riverdale, but we had.
Please, please.
Well, we had a student from Ida Baker Place in the top six. We had a student from Fort Myers High School Place in the top six. We had a student from Mariner who's a state champion. We, I'm sorry, three times. Yep, apparently three different weight classes. We have a student from North Fort Myers High School who is a state champion, and we have a student from Riverdale who's a state champion, in addition to several students who placed in the top six from Riverdale. So you walk into this place and there's bodies on mats everywhere, all of it going on all at the same time. But then the final day, there's only three mats in the middle of this huge arena. Honest to God and true, it was packed, people screaming. And I love sports, but this was crazy. So my point here is a couple of things. First of all, the FHSA does a phenomenal job of making this truly an outstanding experience for every single kid that walks into that arena. There is not a student that walks into that arena that will forget it. It truly is like the high point of their high school athletic career. And the other thing that I need to point out is what we're doing as a district in athletics is really, really great. I got to spend some time with Scott Cook, the principal over at Riverdale, and the athletic director, tell me his last name, Bud Meyer? Bud Mayer?
Bud Meyer.
Bud Meyer? And Coach Hayward. I'll talk about Coach Hayward in a minute. Scott and Justin know those kids. Not only do they know those kids, but Justin knows the athletes at the other schools as well. And he can tell, I mean, he can tell you, he can tell you everything about them. And at one point, there's a break on the final day afternoon, and the Riverdale community, I mean, it's like, there were like 100 people, the Riverdale community got together for a barbecue, and they invited me, and I went, and it was, it was just, it was incredible. But it all centers on or comes from Coach Hayward. Coach Hayward is a legendary wrestling coach in Lee County, and the number of children's lives that that man has impacted in a positive way is beyond my ability to express, and by extension, the community that he has impacted, the community of wrestling that he has put together at Riverdale. So he'll see a kid, and he'll go up to a kid, and he'll be like, "Hey, I can see you like to fight because you're in detention. You want to come fight legally?" And that kid goes on to become a state champion. And it's because he pours himself into that kid. And, you know, there's a lot of wrestling legends in the state of Florida. I know Coach Freeze was one of them here in Lee County for a long time, but it would be tough to live up to Coach Hayward. I got to meet him, I got to spend some time with him. He's a very, very humble man, and I complimented him and told him what I'm saying to you to his face, and he was like, "All right, it's enough of that." And I said, "All right, well, you're going to have to listen to it at the board meeting too, because I'm going to tell the whole world about how awesome you are." So he needs to be recognized for his awesomeness, as do, as does his entire community. Dave LaRosa was also there, and the work Dave LaRosa's doing for athletics in this district, I will say again, I think needs to be recognized with the title of District Athletic Director. Collier County has half the students we have, they have a District Athletic Director. He was there, and Dave goes, and he goes to the FHSA meetings, and he's like, "Hi, I'm from Lee County." He needs to be the Athletic Director in Lee County. Debbie Diggs from North Fort Myers High School was there to watch her one wrestler win a state championship. That guy wrestled in the 285-pound class, which is the very last event, on a Saturday night, and she stayed. And she had tears in her eyes watching him win, which was really cool to see how invested she is. That's it about wrestling. It was really weird, weird in a good way. We've talked about ISOC. I wanted to update you guys on that, but I think we've covered that. Do you have any questions about what's going on there? No? And finally, the last thing is this health education piece needs to include a stronger parent education piece. I remember when my brothers and sisters were growing up in the '70s, drugs were a thing, but my parents were clueless as to what they were because it had not been part of their lives. So they didn't know what to look for in their own kids. And I'm finding that to be the case with my children. So I talk to my kids a lot about drugs, and one night I asked, "Okay, Patty," my impression's her name, my daughter, who's in high school, "Have you been offered drugs yet?" And she said, "Well, I was doing this thing one night, and some kids were dabbing, and they asked me if I wanted to try it." And I thought dabbing was this, you know, this thing that drives elementary principals crazy? Well, dabbing is a really serious thing. It is vaping marijuana oil. And so I said to her, "What is dabbing?" And she said, "It's vaping." And that was back in the fall. And I just found out two weeks ago that dabbing is vaping marijuana oil. I'm a parent who's in the schools, who's involved with our kids, who sits on a school board, and it took me all that time to figure out what it was. So if I don't know what it is, how many other parents don't know what it is? We need to find a way to throw this in their faces, maybe with a video that, I don't know, something. There's got to be a way to catch our parents' attention because now I know what to look for. Now I'm walking around checking out their phones and their little ports on their computers and drug testing them every day, and I'm not doing that. But you get the point. Now I know what to look for. So more parent education would be a suggestion.
Which is, you know, this is what we're already working on. Lauren and her team, you know, I met not that long ago with high school principals, and they've made a request for additional assistance in their buildings, which I'm working with Mr. Blerton and also Rick Parfitt to be able to implement and execute that plan. In addition to that, however, working with Lauren's team to do more public service announcements. We even had a suggestion. Chair Gittens and I were out at the, at that community event, and we had three parents. Well, they weren't, there were one employee and two parents. And we just, and Dr. Carlin was there as well, we just sat down and had a conversation with those individuals. And that, they, the feedback that they gave to us is that we need to reach out to elementary parents in the community on this issue. So we are actually, Dr. Carlin is working with them to make that happen. And we actually asked their advice. We said, "Look, we have our ideas, but you're, you know, you're out in the community, you're parents. How do you think we can best connect with you?" Because here we are in an event, we advertise it, there's three people here. So there has to be better ways to make connections to the community. And so we're working with them to also, I think, try to bring that message to the community in a more effective manner than we've done in the past.
Make one comment on that? Is that okay? The group that I was in at the foundation, team retreat, and also at the advisory board, the student advisory, every time you talk to a group of students, they are adamant that it is rampant, that there is nowhere you can go in the building, whatever. They were discussing at the retreat that they have teachers in all of the restrooms that are assigned to the restrooms, but whatever it is you want to get, you can get at any given time. It is the norm rather than the exception now. And I don't know the answer like the parents that we were talking to, but it's something we really got to look at.
And I think that leads nicely into superintendent's comments.
I don't have any, so that's fine. Go to the superintendent.
I was going to get to you next, I swear. I was going to do superintendent first, then board attorney.
He pointed at me, so you didn't.
Oh, okay.
Couple of events. I know some of you attended the Red Sox event. I know that Debbie Jordan was there, Chair Gittens was there, and, you know, my, our accommodations of the Red Sox organization and those that helped support them, scholarships for, you know, we had 13 scholarships awarded, I believe was $5,000 apiece, and so we were there to recognize those students. And I have to tell you that, and I know that our two board members could attest to this as well, those students were absolutely amazing. One of the primary donors was there and being recognized, supporters of the Red Sox organization was there as well, who was involved in raising funds for those scholarships, had an opportunity to sit down with those kids, and those kids re-inspired him to take his actions to a whole other level. So that was a really, really cool event. And then those two board members turned right around with me and joined with Ms. Morgan at the JROTC Ball, which is of course another phenomenal event, which I have to commend, you know, Colonel Madigan and Zakovic and that whole team. Again, just a wonderful group of kids and a wonderful program. And along those military lines, I have to show you this. It was mentioned Colonel Aviles is back in town, and Richard Aviles, and he has recognized Mr. Davis as a patriotic employer. This is from the, actually, the Office of the Secretary of Defense, Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. And they recognized Mr. Davis because, and I'll go into why in just a moment, but I also want to say that, you know, my name is on this, but this is representative of this board and this school district because this one is also provided to us for being an employer that supports our men and women in the National Guard and Reserve. So you, as an employer, helped really support Richard Aviles and others when they get deployed. They don't worry about, you know, their positions or benefits or this and that. They know that they're going to be well taken care of, and they will have a position when they come back so they can go off and serve their country and not be concerned about, you know, the employer back that we're going to continue to support them. So this is, this is an award that I think recognizes this team as employers. Mr. Davis helped organize efforts to support Mr. Aviles when he was deployed in Baghdad. They sent, you know, care packages, they sent cards from students and staffs. I mean, it was just a tremendous effort, and he, of course, Mr. Aviles, Colonel Aviles, showed his appreciation by nominating him. But, you know, Trey really, truly goes above and beyond to, you know, sent him off with a nice kickoff and then welcomed him back with a wonderful barbecue and then stayed in touch the whole time. And I think Mr. Aviles felt like he never really left this family because of the efforts of Mr. Davis and his team. So I just wanted to express my appreciation for what he did during Mr. Aviles' deployment to Iraq. And those are all my comments.
Thank you. Do we have any matters for good of the order or items for good of the order? I've got a bunch, but it's getting late. If I'm going to seek board consensus on something, do I need to do it here or can I do it this evening?
No, you should do it here.
I should do it here.
This is a voting meeting, correct.
Okay. So Attorney Joe Diggs' evaluation is due April 15th. Do we want to go through that exercise, given the fact that he's given his resignation and is not going to be staying with the district? I personally do not. So let's go from there. If you do not want to give evaluation, can we seek consensus? Thumbs up, thumbs down, can live with it.
Pros and cons, real quick?
I can live with it, I guess. Pros are, I can't think of any. Cons are, we go through the exercise of helping him to improve his job performance here in the school district of Lee County when he's not going to be here.
You asked for things from me, though, but I'm not, I'm trying to wrap up. I'm not inclined to necessarily provide them to you all. So that's my two cents. And I feel honestly that I've been in the job less than a year, so I think the schedule of the way that was done anyway is unfortunate, so.
We asked, though, for, I won't say a report that sounds like work, but points that the next person that sits in your seat, your pros and cons, and things that we could do and they could do that would make the position better.
Perhaps we could talk about that Thursday at the workshop.
If you can bring something, some points with you or whatever.
Lots of them.
So consensus on not doing an official evaluation for the board attorney? Five-nothing, Mary. Seven-nothing, Mary. What was next? District Advisory Committees, we had reached consensus regarding looking at this and making changes. We've done nothing. I don't know, were we supposed to hold a workshop on that to discuss it further? Were we supposed to get, if you could refresh my recollection, were we supposed to get recommendations from staff with regard to the specific qualifications of people on those committees? Like, what's the next step there?
Yeah, I can comment on that. Denise and I have met. She's collected information from the liaison, the staff liaisons for all three of those committees, and that has to be brought to you all with a draft proposed policy with those changes.
And are we two years away from that?
Oh, heck no.
Six months, six weeks?
Well, it's a change of policy. It's never a six-week process, so it's a couple-of-month process because you have to do it over a series of three meetings. So we could certainly bring the proposed policy to you probably the first meeting in April.
As the ladies in the office gear up for next year, I know that they're interested in making sure we have the appropriate applications in place for those committees. So can we do it in advance of that and make sure that they're prepared for that process?
Yes.
Okay. Safety and security discussion?
That process just, that process takes place over the summer, right, Mary?
We start accepting applications from July.
Yes, yes, so yes. I may not be here for the end of it, but.
And will we need to revisit anything about the application process?
Yeah, we'll go through that. We'll be briefed on that, and that's when we'll talk about our concerns. Safety and security workshop, are we scheduling that? Is that something we're working on scheduling?
I am unaware of that one.
We had reached consensus on that at our meeting two weeks ago.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, we are, and I am working on getting that together.
And my final good of the order item is a concern that I have based on an investigative report that was released to this board on, I want to say it was February 8th of 2019. Ms. Morgan, you discussed it a couple of weeks ago. I've been doing a lot of research since this new board was seated because I'm really trying to get us to be, you know, a cohesive working unit that agrees sometimes and disagrees sometimes, but is always professional and moving forward. And what I've learned is that, as Ms. Fisher says all the time, we are all constitutionally elected officers, and we all have a elected officers, and we all have essentially the right to do or say whatever it is we want to do or say. Whether we should say or do certain things is a matter of opinion. And it's not up to me to decide, Mary, Ms. Fisher, what you do or say. It's up to you to decide that. However, we as a board, I think, have to hold each other accountable when it comes to violations of the law. And that report indicated that one of us violated the law.
Right.
And I, I think we have to hold each other accountable in that regard. So I don't know whether it's appropriate for us to ask for an IG investigation, or it's appropriate for us to ask for an ethics investigation, but I do think that it's important for us as a board to move forward in the spirit of transparency to make sure that we're, we're holding each other accountable and we're acting ethically. So what I would like to propose is that we hire outside counsel to advise the board on what our next step should be. And the reason for that is because Attorney Dodek has one foot out the door. He's not going to be here that much longer. I don't want a new board attorney to come in halfway through this process and try to, you know, work backwards and figure out what's going on. I'd like to hire outside counsel that has no, you know, relationship with the district that can be truly objective and, and give us advice as to what our next step is. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I think it's, actually, that's a terrific idea, because, you know, my thought was we needed to do something internally, but really bringing an attorney in who understands the statute and who can make recommendations about what we should do in policy in addition to how we should handle it in terms of practice. I think it's a great idea.
Well, the other, the other piece that I didn't mention that concerns me is our liability as a board, and selfishly, my liability as an individual board member.
Right.
If this district, or specifically this school board, is sued because the, the investigation was compromised by the release of that information, and I'm called to the witness stand, and I'm asked, "Chris Patrica, when did you find out that this information was released?" And I say, "February 9th." "Well, what did you do about it?" And I say, "Nothing." You know, that, I've, I have violated my fiduciary duty to the people that I represent. So it's necessary, in my opinion, to fulfill that duty, to take the next step and figure out what we as a board need to do to protect ourselves. Any other comments, or?
Well-
Yes?
Okay, so do you envision a big gap of time between when Mr. Dodek leaves and we have a new board attorney? Okay, so I, I don't understand the pressing need to have somebody from outside come in. I know once, not too long ago, you said something to me about, well, you know, something took me by surprise, and I can't make a judgment not knowing how much something is going to cost. And I, I will say that, that I need more information. I, I can't just say, "Oh, yeah, we need somebody from outside. I would want to know how much does it cost? Why is it so pressing? Is it not something between now and what, when's your last?"
May 3rd.
May 3rd? I mean, we have all of April. Is this, why, why is this not something Mr. Dodek can deal with?
Well, if I, if I could, well-
Do you feel uncomfortable dealing with it?
I, I think so. I, I think inherently, I represent the board collectively, however, you're all made up of individuals. I report to all of you, and therefore suggesting that I investigate one of you, which I think is what, Ms. Patrica's, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but look into this matter, would I think present a conflict for me? Yes.
And I don't think I was clear. The reason why I'm bringing it up at a briefing and not making a motion tonight is because I would ask that we, we direct the board attorney to bring names and, and costs to us for the purpose of, of giving us legal advice in this, in this circumstance. So, yeah, that, I, I apologize for not being more clear about that.
Okay, okay.
And that's what I mean by consensus. I don't feel like I can go to Attorney Dodek and say, "Do this," without this being a board, something the board has agreed should be pursued.
I understand that a little bit more, but are we investigating a member, or are we just exploring to see what our potential liability as individual members would be?
I'm, I'm requesting legal advice on what our next step as a board should be, given the factual circumstances that we have in front of us. Should that be an independent investigation? Should that be an IG investigation? Should that go in front of the State Ethics Board? I, I don't know. I can't, I can't give that advice as a non-practicing attorney-
Okay, well, I, I misunderstood, because you were saying, I don't, you know, you as an individual, and certainly I don't either as an individual, want to be held individually accountable, so we're really looking at two things, aren't we? Our individual liability, like what might come to us?
No, it becomes individual liability when you act outside the realm of what a board member should be doing. And, and, and the sharing of that information was acting outside the realm of what a school board member should be doing. It's, it's my belief that, that a school board member, given their fiduci, given our fiduciary duty, has a duty to act in this circumstance. If we don't act, then we've stepped outside the bounds of what a school board member should be doing. That, and that's my understanding of the law, that's my understanding of our role, but I am not a practicing attorney, and that's why I need an attorney. And I've called a couple mentors to ask, you know, we're, we're at a point with this board where, yay, we're, you know, we're close to getting along, and we're, but we can't sacrifice ethics and legality in order to, to have a smooth relationship on this board.
Well, if I could, based on, because the clarity has helped, I can give you advice, not sitting here right this moment, as to how I believe you should proceed after doing the research and contacting some individuals in various agencies. I just don't feel like I'm conflicted, I'm conflicted to do the actual, whatever it may be. That's, that's my point. I'm here to give you advice. I'm not here to conduct any type of independent, if you will, because it can't be, investigation of any of you. I mean, that's not my role. And I don't think that's what Ms. Patrica's asking. And I misinterpreted that, but the, the questions helped clarify that, so that's where I'm at.
You have two. Ian, go ahead.
I think I'll wait and to ask my question. I want to hear what some of the other comments are.
I was just thinking, just what you just said, that while you're still, still here, and you understand the circumstances and, and understand everything that's going on, if you could give us some type of, you know, short synopsis, white paper, whatever you want to call it, with your recommendations and possible sources that we could use should we decide to go forward.
Ms. Jordan?
I'm trying to think back to February 8th of what we were speaking about, so I do have to apologize there.
The investigation report that was produced by Mr. Brown about the information that was, the information that was subject of an investigation, a letter that was received by the board and date-stamped was shared outside the district while an ongoing investigation was happening.
Okay, thank you.
Remember that?
Yes.
Okay, good. So do you have any input?
I would like to hear what, your recommendations.
Ms. Givinelli?
Me too.
Ms. Fisher?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Dodek.
Well, I, I will be very honest. My concern with Mr. Dodek starts with the fact that nothing was done on February 9th when that investigative report was submitted to us. There was a very clear statement
I didn't know.
several times in that memo, and we had an obligation as a board, and our board attorney had an obligation at that time, to talk about what was said, and, and we didn't do it, so that's-
Ms. Morgan, respectfully, I have never seen this report as I sit here today.
Oh, really?
I heard you read from it last meeting, but I have never seen the report.
Oh. I am very, very sorry then to have said that. I had no idea. I assumed that you got it in addition to the board.
No, I did not.
Okay, well, that's something else that needs to be addressed, I think, by this board. It's, you know.
You're gonna catch her.
Anyway, I mean, I can live with Attorney Dodek doing it, but I still think that, you said it's May 5th? It's April. Do you have any idea how long it takes a lawyer to do anything? Like, I'm just, I'm really concerned that there's going to be an interruption of service, and I don't think that we're, I, I think that the import of the matter that we're talking about is so great that we shouldn't take the chance of having an interrupt, an interruption in service, and we should have a smooth representation on this specific issue, whether it takes a month or a year, we should have that continuing representation. That's my feeling, yes.
Is there a possibility that Brian could help us?
No, he's a staff attorney. He's not, he can't represent the board. He has to represent-
No, not representing us, but giving his input isn't, okay.
He, he can't give us an opinion that protects us. Only the board attorney can do that. We're at 5:16, so can we get consensus for my original proposal, which was hire outside counsel? Direct the board attorney to look into hiring outside counsel for this? Love it, can live with it?
As a part of his synopsis that he's gonna give to us, yes.
Well, I, I don't know about the synopsis. This is an isolated issue, so you want me to contact some outside counsel and say, "Here's, here's the issue."
Correct.
Which I have to flush out, honestly, 'cause I haven't seen the report. And, and then go from there.
So, yes, can live with it or no?
If he'll come back with information.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
Okay, so we're hiring an outside counsel to give us legal advice on what our next step as a board should be with regard to the release of information that violates state statute?
No, that's not, we just gave him direction to, to, he has to determine that.
Yes, but he's gotta go and do the research about which firm or attorney can handle it and come back to us with a recommendation and cost.
But I would rather him breathe the, the investigation or whatever, if he had any other-
I have an idea of what she's asking me to do.
I'll get to that, I'll get to that.
And I'm fine with the direction, if that's what the board wants me to do.
Ms. Givinelli, I'll, I'll get to that. I'm seeking consensus on my first proposal. If we can get consensus on my first proposal, I will move on to the next. Do we have, I, yes, I can live with it or no on my first proposal?
On getting an attorney.
On having him come back to us with a recommendation on attorneys and the cost, so that we can act on that at the next action meeting.
Yeah.
It is opinion first. I think we need to hear his opinion.
Get there if I can't get consensus, Ms. Givinelli. I'm trying to get consensus on this first. If I can't get consensus, I'll move to that. She's looking for direction from the board to the board attorney. That's what she's looking for. That's it.
And I think that, his piece will come before we get consensus on whether we should go forward to hire someone. So that, that's all we're saying.
Okay, may I get consensus on asking Rob to do what I would like an outside attorney to do?
No, that's not it.
That is what it is. There will be an interruption in service. That's, that's my point. We're, I'm trying to avoid an interruption in service. But, but if that's the will of the, or that's the pleasure of the board, that's where we'll go. Can I get consensus on that?
What are you getting consensus on? 'Cause I need to understand what I'm supposed to do.
You to give us an opinion as to what our next step should be.
And along with some possible people that can help us take that step.
No, no, no. I would like his-
One or the other.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Can we live with that?
Yes. Will, will you come back to us with what you think our next move is?
Well, I, I will say this. I think Ms. Patrica has articulated what she thinks the next move should be. So I told, and I think she's right, I'm, I'm, I told you two things. Well, one thing, I feel as though I don't have the ability to, I don't want to use the word investigate, but look into anything that one of you may have done. That's not my, I, I feel like I'm conflicted on that issue. I think I'm gonna be timed out on that issue potentially anyway if I were that person, and that's why Ms. Patrica's talking about the continuity of service. And I respect that and understand that. So, having said that, I just need clear direction on what you all want me to do. I can certainly give you advice that here's the approach I think you should take and leave it at that, but then Ms. Gittens just added, "And bring names." I mean, I just need clear direction, that's all.
Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, may I? Mr. Dodek?
Yes.
Can you tell me right now that we do need to do something?
Well, I, I'm trying to figure out if Ms. Patrica is saying that the, you're talking about the letter originally, correct? Not the report once it was done?
Correct. The letter was released while an active investigation was going on. A letter came into the district that prompted an investigation, and that letter was released, I want to say, within four hours.
And if there's an employee investigation, all matters regarding a employee investigation under Florida statutes, chapter, section 10, 12, 31, are confidential and exempt until the conclusion of an investigation. So if that occurred, that was a violation of that statute.
Correct.
So if that occurred, which I'm assuming this individual that you would retain would find out, then that is a violation of that statute, yes. It's an open investigation.
My question is, if that were the case, is it incumbent on us to do anything as, as elected officials?
You don't have-
Elected board members? Are we legally responsible to do anything at all?
You don't have the power to do anything to each other.
Right.
That's essentially the state of the law. You're elected officials, that's exactly right.
Okay, so then?
Okay.
So would it be up to the individual?
I'm asking whether it's advisable for us to go to the IG and ask for an investigation, or go to the Ethics Commission and ask for an investigation and a ruling? That, that's, in, in the same way that, that the Inspector General's Office investigates claims that come in with regard to staff, I think it's responsible, it's, it's responsible and necessary for us to investigate claims that come that involve us. It's, it's the same thing, it's just we sit in different seats.
And if you ask OIG or, or whatever to do it, isn't the first step for, for them to say to us, "Do an internal investigation and get back to them"?
And that's what I, that's where I need legal advice, because is this an IG issue? Is this an Ethics Commission's issue? I, I don't know.
So I, I would rather hear from Mr. Dodek.
The, the agency that investigates wrongdoing of elected officials is the Florida Commission on Ethics.
On Ethics.
Yes.
Is it our responsibility to notify the Florida Commission on Ethics?
Collectively as a board?
Collectively as a board, or individually as elected officials regarding another elected official?
I can't answer that, sitting here
Right.
without looking at the Ethics-
So I need that answer before I'm ready to vote on anything.
Me too.
Okay, so we will, Ms. Morgan? I would ask, though, if it's inappropriate for us to do so, who should do it?
That's, that's a good question, and I think anybody, I think, under the statute can file an ethics charge against an individual. I believe the statute is similarly, similar to, to other types of reporting.
But is it our fiduciary duty as board members to act
Right, that's the question.
on the information that we have?
That's what I want to know.
Right. Can we see consensus on that?
Yes. Well, that we need to find out whose responsibility it is.
No, that we need to find out if it's our responsibility, either individually or collectively as a board.
Exactly, and can you do that?
Once we know that, we can move forward.
And that's what you're doing. Then let's do that.
That Mr. Dodek will find that out.
Seven to nothing, Mary. Meeting adjourned.